All right, good evening. We will go ahead and get started. It looks like tonight we have drawn quite a crowd. We do have a pretty significant agenda for tonight, so I appreciate everyone being here. Just want to remind you that while you're in the room, we ask you to keep your face mask on. If you do choose to come up at some point to make public comments or to present, then you may remove your mask during that time period. We will have two special guests with us tonight. One who will give us the invocation, which is Pastor Jeff Powell with the First Baptist Church of Villarica. And right after that, we will have Mr. John Hannaback, our resident veteran that we see at almost every meeting. We're glad to see you back here tonight, John. We'll have you do the pledge of allegiance. So I'm gonna take a moment to introduce these two people before we ask them to come forward. Jeff Powell is the mission pastor at First Baptist Church in Villarica. He and his wife Donna have served multiple churches throughout Georgia. They've lived in the West Georgia area since 1996. Jeff, a graduate of Shorter University, served Midway Church from 1996 to 2006, and First Baptist Church from 2007 to present. He and his wife live in Villarica and enjoy calling Bellevue Apartments their home. Welcome, sir, and it's very good to meet you tonight. So in just a moment, I'll ask you to come up. Let me introduce a man who really doesn't need any introduction, but I have a sizable one anyway. So Mr. John Hannaback. John was born in Indiana. He enlisted in the United States Navy immediately upon the start of the Korean War in 1950. He served for three years on the USS St. Paul, a heavy cruiser and the most heavily decorated ship of the forgotten war. The ship lost 39 lives in Korea, the largest casualties for the Navy. Six of those shipmates remain unfound in Korea. John was discharged in 1954 as a fire control technician, second class. John graduated from Purdue University with a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering in 1958 and went to work for the General Electric Company where he stayed until he retired after 30 years. John was a nuclear weapons effects expert for GE's aerospace and defense division. Flunking retirement, as you can see, he's got a few years on him, and he's still up working every day. John went to work for Georgia Tech as the director, career services. He held this position for 12 years, assisting countless students with their career search, resume preparation, interviewing skills, and related career matters. After retiring from tech, he was a consultant for the University of Southern California, Duke, Mississippi State, and the University of West Georgia. John is currently the secretary of the USS St. Paul Association, a group of 4,000 former shipmates who served aboard the ship. He is a member of the Mirror Lake HOA Advisory Committee. John is the chairman on the Planning and Zoning Commission here in Villarica, and he is a frequent attendee at these meetings, these council meetings. So let's give these two folks a round of applause and welcome both of you. If everyone will please rise, we will ask Pastor Powell to lead us in the invocation and followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you and praise you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in this beautiful city called Villarica. Father, tonight as our council meets, Lord, I pray that you would just watch over them, that you would guide their thoughts, that you would guard their hearts, Father, and that you would direct them in the path that you want them to go. Father, we can't thank you enough for how much you love us and how much you care for us. And so, Lord, pray tonight that you would just pour out your blessings in this time and in this place. May you be honored and glorified by everything that's done tonight, for it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hannaback, if you would come forward?
Thank you, sir. This is indeed an honor and a privilege for me to present this pledge. It's a very meaningful proclamation for me. And I hope that everybody in the audience will pay attention to each word rather than just repeat something. So please remove your hats, hand over your hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you all may be seated. Thank you, John, and I concur with those sentiments. I think oftentimes it's easy just to repeat what we have learned without considering exactly what we're doing here. And what we do here is the people's business. You know, I talked about in my inaugural that Winston Churchill said that democracy is the worst form of government, except all of the rest. It's the best thing we have, and that's what we're here doing tonight. These are the people's elected representatives, and they are here for the common good of all of the city as opposed to possibly advocating for one person or, you know, some small contingent of the population. Okay, I appreciate that, John. Thank you. And if there's anybody else that would like to come in, we may have a seat available. Okay, we have some ceremonial presentations, and I will call those forward who are here. We did some ceremonial photos earlier tonight. But is Chris Todd here tonight? Chris, if you would come forward, in fact, I should remember I already saw you. So Pete Zerbanos will be introducing Chris Todd, who will be celebrating his 15 years of service here with the city of Villarica. Do we have a handheld mic? Because we need to get that, otherwise you won't be able to hear him. Yeah, okay, while he's getting that, just hold that one. Is it ready? All right, thank you, Jim.
Sorry.
I'm proud to introduce Chris Todd. He is our lead operator. He's second in command at the water plant. He's a Class 1 operator, which is the highest certification you can achieve in the water profession. Chris has seen a lot over the 15 years that he's been at the plant. He's very steadfast, very reliable guy, and always keeps the place running, which is no small feat. He's also very instrumental in training newer operators that come to the plant. And it's my honor to be able to recognize Chris tonight for being a 15-year employee.
All right, thank you. Here's your certificate. I should have already handed it to you. There you go, sir. Thank you. Was that mic working? Could you all hear him? Okay, because I could barely hear him. All right, is Gary Bolden here tonight? Okay, Carol Collette, there she is. Come on forward, and Chief Mike Mansour, is he here? There he is, hiding. And he will introduce Collette, who is celebrating 20 years. I knew you'd been here for a while, but I didn't know it was 20 years. Grab that mic.
Congratulations, Carol. 20 years in Villarica, that's a big deal, especially in law enforcement, especially nowadays. Carol's been with us, she was here when I got here, and has hung in and done a great job for us. She's been an SRO, she's been investigator, she's been an officer. So she's served in several capacities, and we appreciate the job that she does and continues to do. So congratulations on 20 years, Carol.
All right, thank you for 20 years. All right, and next up, also celebrating 20 years for our recreation department, Mr. Courtney Powell. And he will be introduced by our city manager, Mr. Tom Barber.
All right, what's Courtney famous for? July 3rd fireworks. You're not the daddy of it, are you? You're not the daddy. You're the caretaker of it. All right, and as you might imagine, for all the success that we've had, what, 15, 20, 25, 50,000 people, I mean, it depends on who you talk to, Courtney is not the reason that our restaurants and fast food places are successful. Can you get that? But he is probably the healthiest guy on our whole staff. Right? Courtney has taught me a lot in the short time that I've known him, three years now that I've known Courtney. And he is one of the guys that is holding the recreation department together right now. And if you don't think that's difficult on a normal day, it's really difficult today where we have all the limitations because of the environment that we're working in. So Courtney, 20 years. Were you expecting it when you came here?
Oh, we're not.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you. 20 years. All right, thank you, Courtney. Yeah, that's usually what happens. Everybody exits about this time. So those are our last recognitions tonight. So we are going to move on to the adoption of the agenda, and after that, we'll do public comments if you're here for that. Let's give everybody a moment. Okay, so we're going to move on to the adoption of the agenda, and I'm going to make two additions to the agenda before we adopt it. Let's add an executive session to the bottom of the agenda, which will be after the city manager's report. We will add that. Executive session for the purpose of personnel. And I'll let you read that statement when we get to it. Somebody just have it prepared. And then we will also add to governing body, B4, request for temporary signage, Clint Chance. Are there any other requests for changes to the agenda? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended, and a second, all in favor? That's unanimous. So we will move on to public comment. Okay, so the public comment sign-up sheet was located out in the lobby. If you have not signed up for it, I will not call your name. But if there is time remaining when I'm done, I'll see if there are anyone else in the room who would like to make a public comment. We have some protocols here. I'll ask you to keep your comments on a professional level. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. If you deviate from this protocol, you will receive a warning from the chair. If you deviate a second time, you'll be asked to leave the premises. The city clerk will bring up the timer. And when I say begin, you'll have three minutes to speak. And you will have the timer in front of you now so that you'll have some idea of where you're at. We won't interrupt you. So first on our list is the infamous Jody Mount. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, ma'am.
Jody Mount, 214 Rockmart Road here in Villarica. And I hope we're not VR very regressive. We've lost our recycling, and now there's a move to get rid of our smoking ordinance. It's been on the books, although it hasn't been enforced. I've heard some different arguments about why we want to allow smoking in our bars and restaurants, and don't tell me we don't have bars, because we do. And they say, you know, we can't, government shouldn't tell business what to do. Well, you know, that's what government does. It gives them parameters to work in. And, you know, when it comes out, the smoking spills out on the sidewalk, and it's a litter. It's the biggest thing I pick up in front of my street. Now, I've heard that, yeah, well, we'll make the businesses responsible for their patrons not throwing their cigarette butts on the sidewalk. Good luck with that, you know. That's not going to work. How is a businessman going to be held responsible for what their patrons do once they walk out the door? Government's all about health. That's why we've got these masks, it's social distancing and everything. What about the workers that have to work in these smoking environments, you know? Well, some may say, well, you know, don't apply for a job there if you don't want to work there, okay? Somewhat valid, but what if that's the only job you have, opportunity? You know, that's the only thing out there. Who knows? Or let's say you smoked when you started working there. Then you decide to start a family, and you don't want to bring that home. You have, your health is more important to you now. You don't want to have to work in an environment that is detrimental to your health. And I didn't have time to look up how many people die from smoke-related diseases, but it's a lot. But there are several reasons. One, it's horribly regressive if we're going to go backwards and start allowing smoking again. The litter thing is just, it's unbelievable. We want to attract more white-collar workers, white-collar businesses. We're not going to get that when you can't even walk downtown without wading through cigarette butts, walk down my street. We can't put it on the police to start fining people for throwing out police, for throwing out butts. I mean, they can't even, they don't have the resources to even stop the truck traffic on Rockmart Road or stop the speeding. Please, guys, let's not go backwards. Keep the smoking ordinance, and let's enforce it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Before I call up the next person, let me just say, because there are several public hearings tonight. If you put your name on this list because you wanted to speak at one of those public hearings, just let me know when I call your name, and we'll save your comments for the public hearing because you will have an opportunity at that time to speak. Okay, the next person up is Mr. John Mount. Sir, will you state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes. Go ahead.
John Mount, 214 Rockmart Road. Half of the Villarica Development Authority. So coming up, it's supposed to come up in December that our contract with Carroll Tomorrow is time to be renewed. Due to the COVID and some other issues, they're running behind in that process. It looks like it may be March, February, or February, March, even April, before they actually start their fundraising and their work to, you know, find out who they're going to work for and who work with. What I would like the council to consider and, you know, is options. I mean, it's always about, you know, what's best for the city. And it may be that Carroll Tomorrow is the best for the city. I think last five years, we've been paying $30,000 a year for their services. I think that we should consider also, does the city want to hire a full-time person that would oversee maybe the Downtown Development Authority and the Industrial Authority? Or, you know, or there may be other options out there. But time is getting closer, that, you know, we're going to have to start making some decisions in that direction. I think there's a lot of potential outside of downtown that is going to happen the next few years. And making the right decisions on who we should give tax breaks to, how we can help people, what's the best way to bring the industries we want, you know. Maybe we don't want industry, maybe we want more commercial, maybe more higher-end, higher-paying jobs. So I'd definitely like to get your input on what, you know, the move forward. And, you know, what's going to be the best. On a personal note, I got a minute left. I would like also to, really like to counsel and the mayor to consider going back to considering parks and recreation. I know we have the park that started several years ago out on Connors Road. It seems to have fallen along the wayside. I thought we had some splosh money for that. And then the park with the lake on it on the other side of Edge Road, where we have a lot of land over there, would make a great park, fishing and swimming and stuff like that. So I'd definitely like to see that come back up and get some recreation out there for the young people and people who like to get out and hike or boat and fish and things like that, right in the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. Let me just hit a couple of things. Just for those who don't know, John is the chairman of the Villarica Development Authority. We appreciate your comments on Carroll Tomorrow. That is an organization that you work directly with. The number is not $30,000 a year. It is $50,000 a year, and that will be considered in the budget. And with regard to the Connors Road Park, that money is in sploshed, and we designated it to be in the last two years of the sploshed funding. So we will be taking a much closer look. It hasn't fallen off of anything. We've prioritized because of the amount of money that will be involved over there. Okay, next up is going to be Mr. Randy Muller. Is he in here? Oh, come on up, sir, if you would state your name and your address for the record, and then you will have three minutes.
Randy Muller, 34 Industrial Court East. And my comment is two things. One, about the smoking ordinance is the city has to help the restaurants if they're not going to allow smoking outside as far as posting signs and whatever for the people and enforce it. We can, as a restaurant, cannot enforce it. The second thing is the new truck stop is planned to come in on Industrial Court East. I'm in favor of it. I talked to a lot of my tenants that rent from me, and they're all in favor of it. They're excited about it, and I'm just hoping that you push it in the right direction and don't table it. That's all I have. Two minutes for somebody else.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Randy. So one of the policies, so everybody knows, is we don't engage, and I'm not going to do that. But let me just ask you, Randy, don't you own property that either joins or is very close to that?
Yes, I have 50 acres.
Okay, I think that's relevant, and you're speaking in favor of that. We'll also, do we take that up as a public hearing tonight on that truck stop?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll have another opportunity. All right. Ms. Lafitte, Kathy Lafitte, is she still here? Come on, ma'am. Come up to the front right here. And if you will state your name and address for the record and pull that mic down a little bit.
Because I'm short.
I have that same issue.
Hello, my name is Kathy Lafitte. My address is 72 Clayhorn Road, Villarica. Am I good to go now?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
First, I want to commend the city leaders and all the city and county staff for the handling of this current unsettling time. We really, everyone really appreciates it. My husband, John and I own and have operated Lafitte Mop Company in Villarica since 1974. So I in no way want my being here to seem like I'm opposed to growth or in industry in Villarica. However, the current proposal for a truck stop, convenience store, accessory truck and RV parking on the corner of Industrial Boulevard and Industrial Court West is not beneficial for our city at that proposed location. At many different times of the day, there are serious backups in traffic on Industrial Boulevard as well as Industrial Court West and Industrial Court East. There are multiple large businesses on both roads and there's a great amount of 14-wheeler traffic at that intersection as well as employee traffic. Goldust Park traffic during sports season will also add to the traffic. The turning lanes that were added years ago to Industrial Boulevard and Industrial Court West did not help but hurt with the vehicles trying to get in or out of Industrial Court West and East. When you add the train tracks into the situation, it makes things much more difficult. When a train comes, it sometimes backs up traffic to the north side, back to Goldust Park and the south side to the Arbor Bin Apartments. Unless some kind soul leaves a space in the opening on Industrial Court, you can be quite some time until your vehicle can get out on the main road. Due to the train track, I do not feel that even a traffic light at this intersection would be of help. There's also a good bit of school bus, bus traffic on Industrial Boulevard. Getting fire department or police or ambulance into one of the businesses if needed could have dire consequences if there was a 10 or 15-minute or more delay caused by adding even more traffic caused by the proposed truck stop. One more extremely important factor is that that property is located, that's proposed for the truck stop is, the site is in a Georgia designated wetland area. Disturbing the wetland is not beneficial to our area, especially putting fuel tanks into the ground. I appreciate your consideration of the existing businesses and the apartments in this area. I did do, brought two little pieces of paper. I'm sure y'all already know where it is and we'll be looking at it tonight. But where, where this property sits, if anybody would like to have it.
Just hand it to the city clerk.
Okey-dokey. All right, that's it. Thank y'all very much for everything you did.
Thank you, Ms. Lafitte. And for the record, you own Lafitte Mop Company and you're just a few parcels down from this property as well, right?
Yes, I am.
All right, that's important. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Next person up, and I, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to read this last name. Taylor, is it Pounds?
Yes, I'll speak on a later hearing.
Okay, on a hearing. Let me write that down. It sounds like a simple name, but the way it was written, I wasn't sure. Okay, next up is Mr. Russ Phillips. Is he here? There he is. Sir, come forward and give us your name and your address for the record, and then you have three minutes.
My name is Russ Phillips. I live at 111 South Candler Street in Villarica. I own the Cinema Tavern, a sports bar in downtown. I would like to ask the council to amend the smoking ordinance for several reasons. One is that, number one, my location is a, is a destination for locals to come and enjoy themselves. We have entertainment. A lot of people come just to interact with their neighbors. They are smokers. It always has been a smoking establishment for 25 years. I feel that this would be detrimental to my business due to the fact that my location does not allow me to have a patio as, as stipulated in, in the ordinance. And I would be in direct non-compliance, which would literally fold my business over probably six months, okay? And because just for the simple fact that they have nowhere to go, okay? It's not allowed on the sidewalk and there is no place for us to feasibly to put a patio, especially by the guidelines of the ordinance. 50% of my floor space, I would have a 2,500 square foot patio. I don't know where I'd put it. I can't put it on the roof. I employ 20 people and paid my taxes and have for, for, for years on end. This ordinance was, was voted down five to nothing in 2012. There is only three businesses that allowed Villarica, smoking in Villarica. And they're all adults, 21 and up. And I believe that people have a choice when they, when they go out. I don't think that folks would want to have, especially in Villarica, cookie cutter, Applebee's or what have you on all the same, okay? I think that it's good to have a mixture of things in a community, okay? Like I said, it's a, it's a destination for all our local people. I hate to see that we would be driving folks out of the community to go find entertainment elsewhere, okay? Just for that simple fact alone. And, and it, you know, I think it, if we, if I unemployed or, or had to close my doors and put all these street people out on the street, it would, it would mean, you know, lower taxes base for you, another empty storefront on the, on the main street. When I opened that business up or when I bought that business, there was only two or three other businesses on that whole street. And now it's a whole, it's much better.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, next up, we have Joe Garofalo. Is he here?
Quake pronunciation.
That I did good. All right. So you come forward and you state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Joseph Garofalo, 252 Marcella Avenue, Sharpsburg, Georgia. I appreciate everybody's time. This is like the third time I'm talking. But I am a small business owner who opened up the place across the street, the Cinema Tavern. I have put millions of dollars into Georgia. I moved out of the Northeast, which has very restrictive laws of what you can do and it's a free country. You live where you want. So I came down south figuring there'd be more conservatism here and that people would be supporting small businesses and rights. So we're amidst the worst economy ever and, and the floodgates are about to open. I mean, 33% contraction in the second quarter. I think we're somewhere between 2008 and 1929. 50 million people not working. So I speak to hopefully at least three of you who hope to be true conservatives in that, A, we have a legal product that people are smoking that generates $14 billion a year in taxes. Every carton of cigarettes sold in Georgia generates $3.70, which that 3.70 goes from the state to the city, whatever. And then small businesses, you know. So last time I talked to everyone here, listen, I'm the canary in the coal mine. I have two or three businesses that probably won't remain open. I have a few hundred people that are working for me. Some of them aren't making enough money where they're still collecting unemployment. And, you know, we need to do everything we can to help the middle class and to help the business owner. So we can't blame it on Donald Trump or Obama. We can't blame it on the Senate. But here, right here in this town, like all the other towns I come to speak in, it's up to you guys to make the difference. So we're talking about a product that's legal, where we let people 21 and up come in. We're not forcing anyone in or out of the place. Now these people will have to smoke in their homes apparently. Now's the only place, because I don't even smoke a drink. But I think, again, we have to do everything to help us survive. You know, like I hope if he goes under, and now to, you know, to be totally transparent, he's lucky I'm his landlord because the guy's behind $10,000, $12,000 to me between rent and, and everything else. But I'm paying taxes here and I'd like to think, exactly like I told other city councils, if he goes vacant, well, then I'll be back here to say, you better cut my, what's called there, buy a third of my taxes. Because you can't call yourselves conservative unless you're conserving things. So let's conserve the right to people's smoke and let's conserve the right for me to survive in other businesses. I appreciate everyone's time today.
All right, thank you, sir. Monica Welch. Monica, if you'll come up here to the podium. And if you would just pull that mic down and state your name and address for the record, and then you can pull your mask down and you have three minutes.
Okay, um, my name is Monica Webb.
Webb, okay.
Do you want my home address?
Yes.
1556.
Okay, go ahead. It's just for the record. Now you have three minutes.
I'm here for the permit for the amphitheater mill to raise money for the police officers get invested. I was just getting, I just wanted the results for that permit. Did you guys think I was going to talk about non-smoking?
I didn't know what you were going to talk about. As far as I know, you was going to talk about your driver's license. Okay, well, then you, you're, you're not needed if you want to just have a seat or, or whatever. You put yourself down for the public comments.
Yes, sir. I, I, for the record, I guess I should say I support non-smoking. And I've done the statistics and generally tax revenues for each county raises by about 5% within the first year. 17% of people in our area are still smokers within the first year. About 6% of those will quit. That's where I stand on the issue. About seven years ago, before the council, I was against going non-smoking. I felt like it might hurt business, but I feel like progress has made it to a point where, and with the pandemic, people have changed their habits. And if we're ever going to do it, now's the time. They've, they've gotten the habit into leaving their house, going on their porch. So might as well keep that going. That's all I have to say about that. Other than that, I'm mostly interested in the get invested program.
Okay, well, I appreciate that and thank you for your comments. You can, if there's a space, you can have a seat. We will get to that. It is on the agenda.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, next person is Kim Wallace. Sorry you had to wait out there, ma'am. If you would just come and pull that mic down, state your name for, and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
My name is Kim Wallace. My address is 8827 U.S. Highway 78. I'm here for the smoking ban. I'm the manager of the watering hole. My mom's the owner and she's sick, so I'm here on behalf of her. I just honestly, I feel like it's, it should be a choice for people to come into an establishment. If an establishment is 21 and up, it should be the establishment's choice whether or not people have, people know that it's a smoking or non-smoking place before they decide to go in. So it's a matter of choice for customers. We have tons of veterans that come in there and they are smokers. They are sitting outside in this heat. We had one pass out and had to call an ambulance. He'd been golfing but before earlier, but coming out there and sitting in the heat again, you know, I just think it's unhealthy for that. I mean, you also have people that have to walk by and you should see the parking lot. It's covered in cigarette butts everywhere, whereas if people are inside, that's not everywhere. We, we keep that cleaned up. You also are putting people in a confined space that normally don't interact. And that can, that can be a good thing in some ways, but it can also be a bad thing in some ways. Some, you get the wrong person, bumps into somebody, you never know what kind of person you're dealing with and it can cause a problem outside. And we've had, we've lost business because of it, which I'm sure other establishments have as well. There are people going to Carrollton and they're going to Douglasville. So that cuts down our business, which cuts down our tax dollars, which affects the city as well. We have people that come in, I mean, we have several local people. We also have people that come from Bremen. They come from Carrollton. We have people that come from Tallapoosa, everywhere, all over, because they enjoy coming out to get something to eat, have entertainment and be able to smoke in a child-free atmosphere. And with, you know, they come out here for this. Other, they're now going other places, especially on the weekends. So we're losing that business, which that affects other local businesses because those people, when they come here, they go to the gas stations, they may go to the grocery stores that are close to here. But if they're not coming out for the, for entertainment, to enjoy dinner and being able to smoke in indoor facility, then the other businesses are, other businesses are going to lose as well. I mean, they're not going, they, it cuts down on theirs, you know, and then I just don't think, it looks great. I mean, I, I am a smoker, but I have tons of customers that are not, and it doesn't bother them. You keep fans going and like I said, people have a choice whether or not to come in the establishment. They totally have that choice. And you should have, I mean, it doesn't look great for people to be standing outside. And you have people that walk out on tabs. We've had tabs that have walked out, which is money we've lost on top of, you know, the business that we've already lost. And we're doing this right on top of COVID. I mean, COVID has already slowed everyone's business down and now the smoking has put an additional hit on the local businesses. So I just ask that you do an amendment to where we have 21 and up and it's their choice.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And the last person I have on here is Phil Kaufman. Hunter, do we have any extra seats? If we do, would you accommodate if anybody needs it? Mr. Kaufman, welcome. If you would state your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes.
Philip Kaufman, 110 National Way, Carrollton.
Okay.
I want to thank the mayor and council for giving me two and a half minutes. Going to make it short.
All right.
Most of you weren't born, but in 1975, I was fortunate to have a boss that said, we're going to Villarica, Georgia. Unemployment is 19%. There was one young lady that I remembered early on, she had to be 12 years old. She's sitting right over there. But honestly, this town welcomed me with open arms. There was two yarn mills or factories. One of them was on slow death. The other one overseas was taking their business. I came into this town and I've never had a reception and I haven't left. I really haven't left. I haven't been back to Villarica for 25 years, other than to visit. I live in Carrollton. And, and to make a long story short, if it hadn't been for this town and the welcoming, we wouldn't have got that employment back up to where people were fighting for the employees. What really helped me was the city of Villarica and the county of Carroll. A guy by the name of Horry Duncan cut me in a road because we had 65 trucks coming in off of an old town called Fullerville. I don't know if most of you kids know where Fullerville is, but thanks to him, he put a road in there. It's called Industrial Court East.
Yeah.
Then later, the city in its progression did Industrial Court West. Then I was fortunate enough to start a company in 1988 called Loco Tool Company. Again, we were looking for employees and, and, and you really had it here. And this, people are calling it a truck stop. I call it a necessity for this city. I don't know how many trucks you have, but you all have registered, I'm going to guess, a couple of hundred a day in a 24-hour day. And I want to tell you, I know it has an anti-message like drugs, narcotics, all that. I want to tell you something. I know Mr. Mansour. He was in Carrollton for many years. When we lost him up here, man, Carrollton went to pieces in a, in a minute. I'm teasing. But I'm going to ask for your support and your recommendations to put that there if you want your industrial base to continue. If you've had enough industry, then you're making the right, right decision. But industry built this town that was hurting from 1975. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, sir. You went about five minutes shorter than you thought you would. You did good. Five seconds, sorry, five seconds. Okay. That is the last name I have on the list. Is there anybody else here who wanted to give public comment tonight? Let me ask, Hunter? Hunter, do you have anybody else out there that would like to give public comments? All right, thank you, sir. Okay, with that, we will close the public comment portion of our meeting. Let me. Sometimes I'm making notes and want to go back and hit them, but I guess I can save some of that for later. Okay, we will move on to the council update. So at first, we give the public an opportunity to speak for three minutes. And then we recognize our council members for some reasonable period of time if they have some comments. So does any council members have any comments? Ms. McPherson, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I wanted to start with thanking Mr. Kaufman for calling me a kid. I haven't been called a kid. I was alive in 1975. I want to thank, just thankful to our citizens that have continued to support our local businesses. Even during this rough time, you might see some improvements even with new businesses that have come in. It's a tough time. But whether it's the ice cream shop or, or Fong's or the way the home accessory unit across from the old Butterball store, the home accessory store. home accessory unit across from the old Butterball store, the, uh, home accessory store, and, and what they've done over in that area, there have been some real nice additions. Thank you. Continue to support local business. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, this is a little bit of a plea, and it's something I've been running into as a councilwoman in my ward, and I know it doesn't just exist in mine. Um, and I'll be looking to do more research in this area. I've talked to staff about it probably one in the past, and it's this. I have rental units, hu, homes, I use that loosely, that are owned by landlords, that are rented by people often that don't qualify to go somewhere else. Maybe, uh, that could be financial, it could be their credit. Uh, maybe they don't pass the background check, and so they're limited as to where they can live, and at times they can be taken advantage of because they gotta live somewhere. And I do have places where the windows don't open. That's a fire hazard. You can be in there with children in the rental house. The windows do not open. So I'm just, that's just one example. Uh, rotting floors. I don't know if there's black mildew, because I don't do those kind of tests, and I don't have the authority or ability to do that. But I'm just putting that out there because I know there's some people that do have contacts that know things, whether it's with the health department. This is something I wanna look in further. I believe there's people that are taken advantage of. And I believe there's landlords that need to clean up their stuff or they need to sell it.
Okay, anybody else? All right, seeing no other, uh, council updates, I will close that portion of the meeting and I will move on to the consent agenda. So in a work session, uh, this past Thursday at three PM, uh, the council met in an open public session to discuss items to place on a consent agenda. I am now going to read off those items that we should be able to, uh, pass tonight by executive, I mean, by, um, unanimous consent, uh, so that we don't have to go through that whole thing again. Item number one, library digital sign replacement. Number two, resolution to execute grant from coronavirus relief fund. Number three, twenty-twenty budget amendments. Number four, twenty-twenty Gold Rush Summer Concert Headlining Entertainment, Velcro Pygmies, Friday, September the eleventh, twenty-twenty. Number five, proposal to hire True Green Commercial Services. Number six, approval of the final plat for the falls at Mirror Lake Phase Two. Number seven, additional lease agreement between the city of Villa Rica and Norfolk Southern. Number eight, dual-factor authentication. Number nine, emergency replacement of number-two influent pump drive at West Plant for twen, uh, for nine thousand eight hundred two dollars thirty-seven cents to PRB Electronics, Inc. Number ten, emergency replacement of number-two West Plant Influent Pump for twenty-five thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars to Goforth Williamson, Inc. Number eleven, emergency repair of number-three Influent Pump at the West Plant for twenty-two thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-two cents to PRB Electronics, Inc. And number twelve, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty paving contract award. Do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda? I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor? All right, that is unanimous. We have adopted the consent agenda and done away with the first page of the agenda. We will now move on to the governing body. Uh, we have approval of minutes from the May twenty-sixth and July fourteenth, uh, meetings. Let's take the first one. Uh, the meeting minutes of May twenty-six, two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion to approve or amend?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-six, two thousand twenty. Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor? That is unanimous. The meeting minutes of July fourteenth, twenty-twenty. Do I have a motion to a move, uh, to approve or amend? I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July fourteenth, twenty-twenty. Do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor? It's unanimous. Madam Clerk, you getting this? Okay, uh, we will now move on to the mayor's reappointment of Joyce Knolls to the Cemetery Commission, a three-year term, which will begin on August the first, two thousand twenty, through July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Is Ms. Knolls in the room tonight? Okay, we will, uh, square her in. Uh, you can set that up at City Hall, and if she prefers to do it here, we'll do it, uh, at our next meeting. Okay, item number three, presentation of two thousand nineteen financial audit by Malden and Jenkins. We have tonight, Mr. James Benz, who is a partner. We see him every year. Come forward, sir. And let's get it.
All right. Well, good evening. Uh, thank you for allowing me to come. Uh, my name's James Benz. I am the audit partner for the city's, uh, September thirty, two thousand nineteen audit, and I'm here to just kind of go over those results. Uh, the audit has been released for a while now. Just due to scheduling, this was the first opportunity to get out here. Uh, I'm gonna go through our auditor's discussion and analysis. That's kind of the document we go through each year. It highlights some of the take, key takeaways from the report. Uh, but certainly if you all have any questions at any point in time, feel free to interrupt. Uh, I don't plan to hit and read every page. It's for your information.
So this is what we have before us. Uh, where do you wanna start?
I'm gonna start on page two in that.
Help us keep up with it. So you're gonna start at page two?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So page two, just to give a little bit of information about our firm, just to, again, we come and see you all once a year. Uh, we, one of the main areas our firm serves is local governments. It's something we focus on, and it's our largest niche within the firm. Uh, I myself am one of the eleven partners who spend year-round working with local governments. So it is something that we don't do on a part-time basis, and we dedicate.
I believe every year you get interrupted by the train. Give us just a minute. Well, let's get that on by, and then I'll let you continue. If it's worth saying, it's worth everybody being able to hear it. All right, go ahead.
Uh, and so, local governments is an area that, that is a primary focus for our firm. We serve over four hundred and fifty local governments throughout the southeast, and we have offices in five different states. And so, uh, just to kind of give some background, this is an area that we, we put a lot of time and resources into, uh, working with governments. On page four of the document, one of the areas we always wanna make sure to express and make clear is, uh, the financial statements that we audited, they're prepared by the city's management. As the independent external auditors, it's our responsibility to audit those financial statements and to present an opinion as to whether or not they are materially correct as presented by management. Uh, we conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards. And through that process, uh, we were able to issue the unmodified opinion that states the financial statements prepared by the city's management were materially correct as presented. That's the clean opinion that you want to receive and you have received historically. Uh, the next thing I wanna kind of touch on is starting on page seven. Uh, a lot of times when, when people wanna ask, "How, how are we looking?" Or when you try to compare governments to governments, uh, they're all different between each other, but one thing that all local governments have in common is the general fund. And that's typically where someone will go to look and see how's this particular entity performed during the year. So we've got a couple of just trend numbers, uh, for you to look at. And so on page seven, you can see we've got a pie chart that kind of looks at how your general fund expenditures were spent this last year. And, and as you can see in the chart, but the key takeaway, your general fund is primarily used to provide public safety to the, to the citizens, as well as public works, which includes your transportation, um, roadway services. And so roadway maintenance and, and projects along those lines. On page nine, uh, nine and ten are gonna give some information related to how the fund performed for the year. And so you can see on page nine, we've got a five-year trend of how the general fund has, uh, added to or used fund balance, which a lot of people also kind of use interchangeably with your reserves. And so you can see for two thousand nineteen, we added one point five million to the fund balance of the general fund. So it was a good year for the general fund. Uh, to put that into context, your final approved budget for the year of two thousand nineteen was basically a balanced budget at zero. I think you were gonna use about thirty-five hundred dollars of reserves, but with some revenues coming in higher than anticipated and some cost savings in it, a couple of the departments, primarily in the police department, uh, we were able to go from basically break even on the year to adding one point five to the bottom line for the general fund. Going over to page ten to kind of, again, put that in the context, uh, the, the general fund's fund balance at the end of the year ended at six point four million. And your annual, your annual appropriations or what you annually use in expenditures is about eleven point nine million. And so at the end of two thousand nineteen, you ended with about fifty percent of your annual, um, expenditures available in fund balance to go forward with. And so that's a, a, a good place to be with your general fund. You can see for the last three years, you've kind of been around fifty to fifty-three percent of your operations in fund balance. On page eleven, at the bottom of eleven and into the top of twelve, uh, without using graphs, we've kind of got just a general summary of how your proprietary funds performed for the year. Obviously, your water and sewer is your main fund in that, in that bucket. And so the cash flows from operations from the water, or from the, uh, proprietary funds this year was five million dollars, compared to the three million dollars last year. And what, what you always wanna look at when you're looking at the cash flows is kind of where did we use those dollars and how did we reinvest it into the, to the system itself? And so there was a little over a million dollars put into capital asset acquisition, which is, uh, expansions and improvements to your system. And then there was about two point three million going towards debt service payments, which was, uh, paying on the principal amounts from, uh, prior borrowings for those improvements. I'm gonna skip a couple of pages and go to page sixteen. I do wanna kind of take this time, uh, and just commend your management team. Uh, we did not have any disagreements through the audit process. We had a good responsive audit. Uh, we asked for a lot of things upfront. We come in, start digging around, poking around, and we asked for more information. And, and your management team was able to get us what we needed to be able to issue our reports and come to our conclusions. So I do wanna thank them on that. We did have a few adjustments. They've been included in the financial statements, and they're also reflected in your financial system at this time. On page seventeen, we had two items that were, uh, kind of cited, that are being cited as non-compliance issues. We've met with management on these. Uh, one deals with one of your component units, the development authority. Uh, they had, uh, they don't have a, a really, an accounting department over there, um, because of staff size. And with them being a component unit, we have to have their information to be able to release the audits. And it took, uh, a couple of months, about five months, for them to get the information over to your finance department, for them to prepare trial balances to be audited. And so that's an area where we've talked a couple of years now that really needs to be looked at and seen if we can bring it in-house or have that outsourced to another, um, depart, group to handle the accounting for them. Uh, but it is an area that continues to delay on getting information for the audit, and it is outside your finance. So, um, wanna make sure that comes to your attention and you all can consider, uh, actions with that. Then we also had your splosted budgets, which were, uh, budgeted to use more, of it, more fund balance than they had available, each of about a hundred thousand. Uh, we didn't overspend them. It was just a budgeting issue, but it is something under state law that we have to report in the financial statements. And then with that, really, the, the last thing to kind of point out is, starting on page twenty, there's about, um, ten pages of new accounting standards coming out. I'm not gonna go through the excitement of reading all those and going through them with you, but just to let you know, uh, GASBY, who's the accounting setting, accounting standard-setting body for governments, is churning out, uh, new standards constantly right now. Um, we do have kind of a, a free year with the pandemic. They did issue one statement that delayed all the implementations for another full year to allow management at every entity time to, to adjust and incorporate these standards. But, uh, we work with your management team to make sure they're aware of the standards as they come out. But we obviously wanna make sure you all, as the governing body, uh, at least have the information before you so that you can reach out with any questions, uh, throughout the time. So with that, that's all I have. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Um, the council has had, uh, this, uh, audit in their possession for, uh, some time now, and I know that you have had it finished for a while. Um, council, does anyone have any questions?
I have two things. Um, wasn't there in here an issue with the IT that there was a concern about internal controls?
Yes, ma'am.
Internal control structure for general computer controls. And from what I read about it, it seems like just other ways that we've gotta be able to protect our data, make sure it doesn't go down. I know Jim's trying to save us from ourselves because of the issues we had in the past and trying to get us up to par. So has that been sufficiently addressed, or?
As of today.
But we're ready to deal with that, city manager, or?
I don't think so. I, I, I can't answer. Something that we've, we've discussed and talked about, it, it is an area where these are just our recommendations of areas where we see could be improved. Um, obviously, we all know how today's times, the, the IT world, there's lots of exposure in that area, and so we always wanna make sure we communicate to, to management, as well as governing bodies, that if, if we see room for improvement, that we're bringing it to your attention.
Okay, so that's something we might have to look at again. And, and just real quick, back on page ten, uh, if you would just clarify for me, uh, it states in the report that the wider the gap between the expenditures and fund balance, the less leverage the city has as it enters a new fiscal year. Okay, so the graph looks wide, but yet at the same time, I know that we're good in our reserves and we're beyond what's required, um, you know, standard industry is what, asking for three months, and we've got beyond that. So didn't, am I just not looking at that graph correctly? When I'm thinking, well, it looks wide apart, but I know we're in good shape with that?
It, it's really the scale.
Can you tell this is not what I do for a living, this financial stuff with graphs?
It's misleading, I guess, in the sense of the scale of the graph, because we obviously want to make it so that it's not really hard to read. So we, we kind of zoomed in on that one piece, but you're correct. If you look at the percentages down below, you'll see you are, for the last three years, have been sitting a little over fifty percent, and industry standard is, uh, three to four months. So you're, you're well above that leveraging ratio.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman McPherson, does any other council members have any questions? Okay, if there are no questions. Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here tonight, and, uh, thank you for this, uh, comprehensive audit that we get every year. Okay, with that, uh, we're going to move on to an added item. Uh, and I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Clint Chance to come forward. Uh, and Clint is, is your county commissioner, as well as he has a, uh, robust rodeo business that he puts on every year. And I'm gonna ask you to tell us a little bit about what you do and what you would like for the council to do tonight.
Sure. Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Clint Chance, two-seventeen North Avenue, Villa Rica. Appreciate the opportunity to come before all of you and speak this evening. Uh, we have held an event here in Villa Rica. This will be our fifteenth year, uh, the Villa Rica Frontiers Rodeo. I had sent some specific information to staff, kind of outlining what we'd like to do with the temporary signage that we normally do every year. Typically, what we do is we place this, obviously, on private property, and we get the property owner's permission. In the city limits, we log that information. If there's ever a question, if a sign should be on a piece of property or not, we have the, uh, you know, who gave us permission to do that. Many of these are sponsors. We would not be putting any signs in the right of ways. So we're basically looking to essentially do what we have been doing, uh, in years past. Thinking about the totality of this, of a larger sporting event, and considering the times that we're in under COVID-nineteen, we're gonna be running under the governor's, um, executive orders that he released on July one that specifically allows live performance, uh, venues to operate. Uh, just to give you a few things in there that we're doing extra to try to keep, um, staff and the community safe. We're bringing in hand washing stations, portable hand washing stations that we've never had before. We're gonna have different, uh, hand sanitizing stations, uh, that will be around, uh, as well. Um, most people have a mask. Um, if they do not have a mask and they would like a mask, uh, we will offer that to them free of charge, uh, no charge. We're not gonna mandate masks. We're going specifically, not more, not less, than what the governor has outlined in the live performance venue. Another thing, we've hired some staff that will be there throughout the entirety of the event to, um, sanitize, uh, high-traffic areas such as the restroom, some of the, um, vending areas, some of the rides and so forth. They're gonna be spraying and disinfecting throughout the night. We have rented the largest, um, seating capacity that you can bring in portable-wise. Um, I don't mind telling you, we've spent eight thousand dollars just on, a lot of people don't understand the amount of money it takes to put on a venue like this, but we've spent eight thousand dollars just in bringing in the seating. Most of the seating you'll see cost around five thousand for a venue this size. So we've tried to incorporate the largest amount of seating we can, so hopefully people can do their best to have a little bit of room. We have monitored other events that have started back on July one. Um, I know this is a work in progress. Even the doctors and nurses and everyone is trying to learn as we move forward. But typically, when there's been an event, you typically see something happening about fourteen days afterwards, if there's a spread, if people are getting sick. So in this part of the region, monitoring things since it's happened since July one, we have not seen anything that has alarmed us, uh, by hospitals being overrun and that sort of thing, by the type venue that we're trying to put on, from other things that are following some of the same, uh, circumstances. And so that's just a little bit, you know, of a rundown of, of what we're wanting to do. Uh, probably ninety-five percent of our sponsors that have stayed with us through the years are returning back. We've only had, I think, a couple that just were not financially able, um, to participate, but everyone else wants to have the event. Uh, we've had an outpouring from the community. We've had an outpouring from the community, the high schools, some of the sporting events. They're they're nervous from the standpoint of the state, looking at budget cuts. They they need the money every year anyways. They make some several thousand dollars off some of the things they're involved in. But even with the budget cuts, they're really looking forward to being able to have access to to the venue to be able to bring in some of the additional income. So I went a little bit more besides just the signage, just to give you a little bit of idea of the safety precautions and things that we're going to be doing our best to follow by the governor's guidelines for these type venues.
Okay, I appreciate that, Clint. So this is scheduled for August the 28th and 29th, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this item you called me about earlier today because it should have, it needed to be on this agenda, and it is not. And that's why I've added it to this agenda. But you need this tonight.
Yes, sir. Typically, we put something out, we put the signage, and it's in the request for two weeks out. I think there may have been some, I know we have some new staff, and I'm not throwing anyone, but I think I think some of them were just.
The point is, I wanted to highlight that this is necessary, that we take this action tonight. So council, we do this every year. This is not new. Does anybody have any questions for Clint?
Clint, would it be correct that you sent this information in a number of weeks ago to the city?
Yes, ma'am. I think I sent it in two or three days prior to the deadline that was required for this particular agenda.
Okay, so you did what you need to do to get it in. Okay, so, all right, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I just, my only question is, what exactly, I know in the years past, you've so many signs, so many sizes and so forth. What's the request? I haven't seen it.
It is the same request.
So the intent is that it be exactly identical to previous years. He has submitted to me the email that he submitted to staff, and I was going to make a motion that incorporated this as the parameters.
Okay.
In other words, we're going to try to do exactly what we did last year, because anything before the council is supposed to be in writing. I don't have that per se right here, but I can make that because he has submitted to me the backup documents. So if there are no more questions, I will present a a motion that can be that can be seconded. This would be a motion to approve the request for temporary signage for the 2020 Frontier Rodeo to be held on August the 28th and 29th, 2020, per the guideline submitted in an email by Clint Chance on August the 11th at 4:40 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that, Mr. Turney, is that legal for the mayor to make the motion?
I think just to make the record perfectly clear, somebody else saw him move it.
Okay.
I thought that was the case. So let me be the one to make the motion that the mayor just read.
Without having to say it all over again.
Without having to reread it.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clint. It's not, though. So we'll get that straightened out shortly. Okay, let's move on to paragraph C, Community Development. Mr. Bobby Elliott is the director, but we were going to hear from Ron Johnson. So first item is VA dash 02 dash 20 variance application for international component repair and public hearing. There will be a public hearing on this. So Ron, go ahead.
Good afternoon, council, Mayor and council. This application is for VA dash 02 dash 20. For the record, I'll repeat the parcel numbers, V 03 01 00020 and V 03 01 00059. The applicant is ICR, International Component Repair, and they're requesting two variances to encroach into the front yard setback by a total of 20 feet. The requirement in the code in the current UDC is 25 feet, and they're proposing five feet to line up with an existing building that's on site and also to construct multiple principal structures on the same lot for a total of four, when our ordinance require or only permits a maximum of one. And the applicant is here tonight. Just to give you some further background on this, on June 25th, 2019, this council approved a variance from the city's 75-foot impervious stream buffer for a total of 650 square feet, and that was for an initial plan that they did have, where two of the buildings would be located inside of the stream buffer. This application would change that to where they would not need any stream buffer variances. And the variance that was already gift already granted by the council, they're proposing to not utilize that in favor of these if they are passed affirmatively tonight.
Okay. How do we want to do this? Do we want to discuss it here and then open for public comment or public hearing and then come back to? Let's do that. First?
Yes.
You want to do it first? Okay, thank you, Ron. We will now move to the public hearing portion of this item. So anyone here that would like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Taylor Pounds. I'm with HRC Engineers, Surveyors, and Landscape Architects, located at 6554 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia. I'm here representing the applicant, Wayne Dull, of International Component Repair, or ICR for short. As Ronald said, the property is located at 330 West Industrial Court in Villarica. Property is approximately eight acres, just shy of. Mr. Dull also just purchased two acres adjacent to the property on the west side. That's an additional two acres. So currently, Mr. Dull owns just shy of 10 acres. ICR has been at this location since 2011, and is quickly outgrowing the current facility. ICR specializes in the refurbishing of aviation engines for some of the world's largest airlines and has clients in 16 countries around the globe. We're here tonight seeking two variances that would allow Mr. Dull and ICR to efficiently expand their facility on the current property in Villarica and not forcing and would not force them to relocate. The first item we are seeking is out of section 1.06A, which states that there's only one principal building allowed on the piece of property. We have 10 acres that we'd like to expand on. The difference of expanding onto an existing building versus having separate buildings really can hamper the efficiency as well as the organizational patterns of what my client does at this facility. As you can imagine, when you're taking apart fan blades on Delta Airline engines, there's an organizational aspect to that that we want to keep organized, for lack of better terms. There's also FFA guidelines that Mr. Dull has to conform with. So that is the reason why we want more than one building. The second variance we're applying for today is to encroach on the 25-foot setback that Ronald talked about. We want to do this because the existing building that Mr. Dull purchased in 2011 already exists approximately five to 10 feet off the property line. We're simply just wanting to match that. The building, it will not be parallel with West Industrial Court as the existing building is. It'll be perpendicular. So we'll have a small frontage of building that's within this this 25 feet. Now, I'm not sure if you all have the site plan in front of you, but there's really only one corner of this proposed building loc or I believe it's called proposed building number one that's actually close to the right-of-way line. That's the corner that concerns us, and it's really the curvature, the horizontal curvature of the road that causes this. So we, why this is important to us is there's existing roll-up doors on this building that, again, Mr. Dull purchased in 2011. He did not construct this themselves, but that he wants to match up with. You can imagine, when you're taking large aircraft engines from point A to point B, we want to efficiently provide, you know, be able to move those things, and circulation is key. So the closer we can get these roll-up doors to each other, the better we are, the more efficiently we can move these things back and forth, and Mr. Dull can streamline his business, continue to make his business successful. So I would like to make note that neither of the variances sought tonight have any negative environmental concerns. I know this was brought up in a number of meetings with city staff. That is no not an issue with these two variances, and that's not what we're asking. In addition, if the council would so graciously approve us tonight on these two variances, we'd be willing to forfeit the variance that was approved on June 25 or 25th, 2019, that granted us stream buffer encroachment for that 650 feet. We feel like we would no longer need that, and we are no longer seeking it pending the approval of this tonight. So at this time, the applicant and myself would be happy to answer any questions that the council and staff may have. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Do any council members have questions for Taylor or the applicant? Mr. Applicant, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Will come forward. Does anybody have any questions before we start?
I do.
All right, go ahead.
But we could answer as we go along and maybe just incorporate them. A couple of questions I had might had to do with, what do you consider?
Oh, wait a minute, councilman. I need to do the public hearing portion first, and then we can do some back and forth.
No problem.
That's my mistake. Sir, let's go ahead and get you to to speak, and then we'll see if anybody else needs to speak, and then we can do a little bit of that.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to thank you for your time. I'm Wayne Dull, the owner of International Component Repair, and also have a joint venture with IHI of Japan, okay, in the same building. So I've actually got two companies, okay, in the building at 330 Industrial Court. And then also have 20,000 square feet on on the west side in Industrial Court, okay? So, you know, Taylor is correct, but I've right now in the 40,000 square foot building, I've got International Component Repair, 20,000 square feet, and I've got 20,000 square feet for the joint venture with IHI Japan. Okay, so I got segregation issues there. About the building is completely full. But I also need segregation issues. The reason I need a separate building, okay, is I do work for the military. I support Lockheed Martin, Pratt &amp; Whitney. So the FAA regulations and the military are totally different, okay? So they have to be completely segregated, okay? The engines, I started tearing down engines last year, okay? We've done five engines. The engines are around 5,500 pounds apiece, and with the stand that they come on, that's about another 2,000, so about 7,500 pounds. And so then the the engines down the center of the engine's got a shaft, and they're carbon sealed, okay? The carbon seals are about $200,000 worth of parts. The jet engines are delivered on an air ride trailer, okay? So when I pick it up with my forklift, which is a monster forklift, got to be very careful not when I'm moving it. So that's the reason, you know, Taylor said, we need to align the building so I can move the 5,500-pound engines, which are still on their stand, so 7,500 pounds, efficiently from one building to the other. I've got to store these engines, too, okay? I've got over 200 customers in actually 17 different countries, and we're we're growing extremely fast, and I'm out of space. And so that's that's where I'm at. And also, the joint venture with the Japanese is growing. I run both companies. And so it's, we're blessed, okay? Our business is off significantly, but I would still go ahead and build the building. You know, I'm going to build one building at a time, but I need additional space immediately.
Okay, thank you. We'll ask you to sit. Does anybody else want to speak for or against this? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing portion, and the applicant can come back forward. And Taylor, possibly. We'll see if we got any questions from the council. Now, Councilwoman McPherson.
Yeah, I have a few for you and then probably a couple for staff also. With this expansion, what would you consider the, if you had to put a dollar on it, the capital investment that you're making with this expansion? And then second part of that question would be, do you, you're expanding, are you expecting a certain amount of job creation with that?
Yeah, I already have 70 employees, okay?
Currently, you have?
70.
70, okay. And I apologize, I caught Wayne, but I did not catch your last name.
Dull, D-E-W-E-L-L.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dull.
Yep.
Is that all of your questions?
Capital investment?
Just the building will be over a million dollars.
Okay.
And then the equipment, I mean, just the equipment for the engine disassembly was like 1.1 billion. So capital investment, we projected, you're talking about for in the building after I build the building?
Yeah, and I consider the building a capital investment, too.
Yeah, so it would probably, I mean, the, a lot of the, I've got a lot of equipment on the east industrial course, okay? But it would probably be initially probably another 500,000, okay?
And you currently have 70 people that you're employing?
Yes.
And you expect that that will grow with this expansion?
Yeah, I mean, right, as of right now, you know, the work is off significantly because of what's going on, okay? But absolutely, yeah. And, you know, we actually work, I don't want to deviate much here, but we do a fuel diverter and return valve. It's a $100,000 part. There's only two places in the world to get it repaired, Villarica and Tokyo. That's it, okay? Several of the things that I do, there's only two, my main competition is GK, GKN, which is a multi-multi-billion-dollar company in GE, okay? So I'm in a very unique business, okay? I was with Delta for 31 years, retired and started my own company in 2002, and we've been very blessed. Like I said, I've got over 200 customers in 17 different countries.
I appreciate that, thank you. And I'm not saying this to be a little biased, because it's not really just your company. And I would like to get out to that industrial area more often, but when when we went out to Loico, some of the others that are going, I feel like Villarica, being Little Villarica, is very fortunate to have some of the industry we have out there.
Oh, yeah.
And I wasn't even aware that that particular thing, two places in the world to be repaired, and I don't think most of our city, I don't know that stuff sometime, right, until it comes out of your mouth.
Yeah.
So I think it's interesting sometime that our little city has some pretty significant business here.
Yeah, I've had some of the the top guys from IHI and Japan have been here. They've been blown away with our city, okay?
You teach them how to say y'all? I'm sorry, I'm not going to.
He does, actually, yeah. And so it's, that's a long story, too. But I mean, one of the heads of Lufthans Airlines has been here several times. A lot of the Japanese people, when they're here, I've literally seen three of them cry when they're going home, okay? Because they couldn't believe what we have here in America, okay? We're so blessed to live in this country, okay?
I think we'll all second that.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the council?
I have a question for staff.
Okay. Staff, come on back up. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
We need you, we'll grab you again.
Ron, good afternoon. So you updated the proposed motions in this, and so we now have a motion that deals with just the front yard setback and a motion that deals with the max principal structures.
Yes.
It's my understanding that if the council adopts the new Villarica zoning ordinance here after as our next item, the ordinance will no longer require maximum principal structures.
For industrial properties, yes.
For industrial properties. So if the council were to deny the max principal structures request, and then in the next vote, adopt an ordinance that no longer requires max principal structures, does that then mean that Mr. Dull could then continue with his proposed site plan?
It would, yes, without without a variance.
Without a variance, okay. City managers, just.
All right, Avery, step up.
Is it because of the order we're taking things that messes it up?
The application itself is under the old ordinance, but.
So is he requested to be under the new ordinance?
No, he has not.
But once we rezone it under the new zoning, then it will apply the new ordinance.
So he would be covered.
If we table it.
He would be covered.
So. Well, even if we even if we deny it, the ordinance will then change, allowing it to be permitted anyway, so, yes.
Which begs the question, why are we sitting here?
I would think that unless, my opinion would be that if it was a more restrictive, then I think the applicant would have an argument that he was grandfathered in or something to that effect. But since this would be a less restrictive, I think he could be able to take the advantage of that.
That makes sense to me.
So I just.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So my my thought is, do we do we need to address second the motion at all?
Well, we do, because we we still have to reach this 25-foot setback that they want to change.
That's what I was saying, the second, the second.
Oh, the second piece of the, yeah.
The second piece of it, right.
Do we need to do that, or should we move this to, let's say, the bottom of community development?
You could move it, you could go ahead and vote on it now, or you could move it.
Well, let me ask you this. If we, and if we just sort of disregard the multiple principal buildings session, section, and then just handle the setback now and leave the other one alone, we'd be fine there, right?
Right, right. Assuming that the ordinance gets.
I understand that. So, council, let's, while we've done all this, let's go ahead and consider this twenty-five foot setback piece, and if we can get that resolved, then we'll move on, and we'll just table this to the end of this section. And then, if I need to address it again, I will, and if I do not, we will, we will move on. Does that sound okay?
Sounds good.
All right, let's talk about the setback, then. So, Ron has already presented that to us. Does council have any questions?
Yeah, there's a current, there's a building on there now. What is the setback on that building that exists?
It's currently five feet to the front yard.
So, we already have a building on there with a five-foot setback?
Mm-hmm. It's pre-existing nonconformity.
Mr. Young?
The only reason they're asking for the other building to match that is for aesthetics? Well, I heard, I heard the comment about matching the roll-up doors, but you're trying to match two roll-up doors to three roll-up doors, so there's not a direct match. And the diagram I'm looking at doesn't show concrete from building to building, which I'm assuming you're eventually gonna put in, because you wanna transport an expensive jet engine across gravel? So.
No, it would be, it would be concrete.
So, one of the three doors in the existing building is gonna have to angle to get to one of the two doors in the other building. So, why couldn't they all angle and keep the setback as it is? I mean.
I would have to.
I'm looking at the diagram here, and the center door doesn't match up with either of the two doors in the other building. So, something's gonna have to bend a little bit to get from one building to the other.
It's not the length of the inch, they can be angled, it's just, it's providing the shortest path from roll-up door to roll-up door.
And the increase is ten feet? If we do the trigonometry, the increase is what, ten feet?
In our opinion, the, if we, the shorter we can make that distance, the better off we are.
Better off you are.
I'm worried about setting a precedence that, you know, when we make a variance, generally there's a reason there that we can use to pin it to that specific variance. So that if somebody else comes up and asks for the same five feet, we have the option of saying no, because it's not the same thing. So, I'm looking for, why is it so important that you get that, you get five, a five-foot setback instead of twenty-five-foot setback? And I have a hard time rationalizing that.
So, one thing that's not shown on this concept plan to date is that we do have to provide stormwater management practices on the site. This building will be larger than the five thousand square foot minimum, which triggers us into stormwater detention, water quality, things of that nature. This site does flow towards page bottom or towards the railroad, so my pond will be located to the south of what you see as proposed building number two. So, the further that I push these buildings to the south, the more I am, I will be hampering the amount of stormwater opportunities that I have, which push me into other areas. So, to maximize the site to its fullest potential, we did shift that building further up for that reason, in addition to these, the simple reason that we did state when I was talking earlier, that we want those roll-up doors to be as close to each other as possible.
Okay. So, that, I mean, Mr. Young states a, I mean, a sort of a cardinal piece of what we do here. When we offer or when we allow for variances, we do look for there to be extraordinary circumstances to justify that. I'm not saying they don't exist, but I think we were looking for something a little bit more, but only you can give it to us, or the applicant. Mr. Applicant, do you have an articulate reason for why you would want to have this five-foot setback as opposed to twenty-five-foot, and why it would be an extraordinary burden not to?
Yeah, well, like I said earlier, the engines have the bearings in them. They're about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? And then, so, the shorter the distance, the less I can damage that engine, going back and forth. And I have to, I will be storing engines from our customers also. But then, now I've got employees working, going back and forth, okay? So, I would use the analogy, when you're painting a room, do you want the paint bucket in front of you, or do you want it on the other side of the room? Okay? So, I mean, that's just really, I'm about efficiency. And the way I structure my buildings, when the FAA comes in, you have to have, you've gotta have an inspection area, you've gotta have a working area. The shop has to be laid out where the government comes in and says, this is good. So, okay, so, I mean, in your quality department, it's totally different from your production, okay? So, again, it's not just one big building. I have, the building has to be laid out when the government comes in. It fits theirs. All my floor plans have to be approved by the government, okay? So, you know, when you're, it's gotta make sense, and basically, it's really just common sense, okay? So, you know, again, it's just, it's about efficiency.
Okay. It sounds like to me that it's about lining those buildings up so that you have a shorter path and fewer turns for liability of moving those engines.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Which seems like that would make some sense to me.
The engines in used condition are three to five million apiece, okay? So, and again, like I said, all my floor plans have to be approved by the government.
Okay. I appreciate that. Does council, any other questions?
For staff.
You have a question for staff?
Yeah.
Come back up, please.
Yes, sir.
So, Ron, originally, we had approved them to go into that seventy-five-foot stream buffer.
Yes.
State requires twenty-five, Villa Rica seventy-five. We had given them a variance to do that. They're not gonna do that now. They're, they're shifting it. Do you see that there's a hardship for them to some degree to get what they need on that property, to do what they need to do? Do you see some hardship for them in that? And, and part two, do you consider this, us giving this variance, could you explain for me how that is detrimental going forward? In other words, okay, so if we give to one, do we have to give it to someone else? Well, we don't necessarily, if we can demonstrate that there was a good reason for us giving it. Do you consider this an extraordinary or unusual to grant these kind of variances with your background in this? So, I'm sorry, I gave you like three questions.
No, no, absolutely. No, I'll try to tackle them as I can. So, your first question was about a hardship. If a hardship exists on the property, there's, of course, there's two different types of hardships, right? So, we have hardships that are created by an applicant, and then we have hardships that are site-specific, right? There could be a lake or a stream in certain cases. There, there is a hardship, if you were, to include both properties that they've purchased, the two that are up here tonight, not just three thirty West Industrial, but the property next door to it with the stream. They bought property that they can't use, right? They can't build within a stream buffer, up, only up to six hundred and fifty square feet, as the council has allowed. There is an applicant-created burden and hardship, being that the buildings are not going to be connected. If your buildings were connected, it alleviates at least one of these variances tonight. There, so you're looking really at two different types of hardships all in one. So, there is a hardship that is, that is here and on the property. Is there any sort of detrimental, I think that was one of your questions, any detrimental effects if you were to approve this based on the history? I did take a look today at the industrial park as a whole, and how many buildings, how many lots have multiple buildings on them that could be considered principal structures? There is only one other property that's in close proximity to this one that has multiple buildings on it. All of the other properties, Flowers Bakery, all of your other properties, large and small, all only have one structure per lot. So, there is, there's already been a precedent that has been set here. The precedent was with that, that other property, not with this one. So, can they, is there gonna be a setting of a precedent if something is passed, if this is passed tonight? I can't say that there, there would be, unfortunately, because the precedent has already been set. Now, I think you had some other, I may have missed a couple.
Okay, so then, if I, if I got what you just said, you don't see some big detrimental precedent being set going forward?
Well, in my, in my experience, if you did ask me about that, I'm sorry. Yeah, our, being that we're passing a new zoning ordinance as well, I mean, that's gonna take, that in itself, there wouldn't be any precedent set from this application, being that it would, it could be passed under the new zoning ordinance without an application.
Even this aspect, not just the multiple buildings on the site, but as far as being set, that twenty, instead of the twenty-five feet, you know, the five feet?
Yeah, I would say yes, there would be. Chris and I did talk today about this application. I believe you did receive an email from Chris as well earlier today, explaining it as well, but there wouldn't be.
That addressed the multiple buildings. Did I miss something? Go ahead.
Yeah. So, as far as this front yard setback, however, that, there's gonna be no way around that, that even with them matching up to the building, being that the buildings are not connected together, there's no extension of a pre-existing nonconforming structure, being that a whole new structure is being constructed. But you did ask me about my experiences in this with variances and things of that nature.
Yeah, would this be extraordinary to grant this type of variances?
It's not, it's not very extraordinary, no. Variances are necessary evils to development, and in my philosophy, I think that there's a, people asking, someone asking for two variances specifically because they don't want to go into a stream buffer area is beneficial to the city. Otherwise, you're going to have a building within a city required setback or setback from a stream, which is probably a lot more detrimental than the front yard setback, being that there's no site triangles from getting in and out of the site. There's really no negative effect to that.
Ron, why is it that we already have a building on this site that's at a five-foot setback? Why do we have that already?
It must have been approved at some point in the past. I didn't find any applications for, for that in our system. It's, this looks like an old building that has been there for quite some time. I'm sure the applicant can probably attest to that.
The building was there before the road.
The building was there before the road.
There you go.
So, that, I think answers it right there.
Good information.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ron, do you know what the width of the pavement is out there on Industrial Court West?
I don't, unfortunately. I don't have the width. But I did take a site visit out there, actually, two site visits out there, and I, it's relatively excessive in width. I mean, I would say.
Sixty-foot right of way?
It was probably, I was gonna say, sixty, it's definitely higher than fifty-foot right-of-way.
I'm hearing eighty?
Eighty.
Eighty-foot right, I mean, you can see, this is, there's plenty of right-of-way. There's a, there's a huge gap in between the edge of pavement and the property line within itself. This gap must be ten feet wide at least. So, as far as entrance and exit out of the site, if two buildings are pushed up towards the property line, only five feet away, you can still see by coming out, because the driveway is relatively long going into the site.
What would be the typical right-of-way for a road like Industrial Court West, if it were being built today's standards?
For a local road, in our, in our zoning ordinance, we have fifty feet is typically the size of a local road.
Okay. So, this is a minimum of sixty, but the applicant says eighty, though their site plan says sixty, right? Okay. And like you said, there's significant distance between the edge of pavement and the property line, which would be the boundary of the right-of-way. I was out there this morning. It didn't seem like it was any, it was probably a twenty-four, twenty-five foot. That was just my ballpark. I know that's a typical distance for a road, too. So, I would measure, just off the top of my head, it appeared that it was, like you said, at least ten feet, if not maybe fifteen or twenty, so.
Okay. Are there any more questions for staff? Is anyone prepared to make a motion on this setback?
I'm just, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could interrupt for just a second to clarify one point.
Yes, sir.
It's important. You do have the right to make a motion. It's under our charge, but you don't have the right of voting. You do have the right to make a motion.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
It's good to know.
My, my last advice from you on that was to do it sparingly. But I knew that I had a complicated one, so I was just gonna try to get it out of the way real quick. But thank you, sir. Okay. Ms. McPherson, you have a motion for us?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to grant the variance request from Wayne Dull of International Component Repair to encroach into the front yard setback, as indicated in the supplied site plan exhibit.
Second.
Second, oh, sorry.
Okay. I have a motion to grant the variance request from Wayne Dull of International Component Repair to encroach into the front yard setback, as indicated in the supplied site plan exhibit. I have a second. All in favor? That is unanimous. All right. Thank you, sir. I hope that's helpful. And you'll just, if you'll hang on for that second part, if this, Taylor said, ah, we'll, we'll get that next piece out, and then I think you won't have an issue.
Go ahead and make your motion, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
Go ahead and make the motion.
Okay. Danny's got jokes today. All right. We will, thank you, Ron. We will move on to community development number two, which is going to be our deputy director.
Mr. Mayor, it would be good if we could have a motion to table it to the later agenda.
I was just going to, okay.
If we could have a motion in a second to table.
All right. Can I get a motion to, to do what?
To move it on the agenda.
To where?
To.
C five?
C five.
All right, we'll create a C five. I need a motion to move.
So moved.
The maximum principal structures portion to C five.
Second.
You got a motion, nothing to say.
All right. I got a motion from Mr. Young, a second from Mr. Carter. All in favor? Okay. All right. Now, let's move on to our distinguished deputy director, Chris Montesinos, for adoption of the Villa Rica zoning ordinance and official zoning map in public hearing. We are going to, well, let's hear an introduction from Chris, and then we'll go to the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm back again. This is the final public hearing for the adoption of the Villa Rica zoning ordinance and the official zoning map for the city of Villa Rica. It's two separate motions. Just as an addendum to an email that I sent out earlier today, when I was doing a final check of the ordinance, I found one minor discrepancy that needed to be addressed, and I've sent you an email and outlined exactly what that was regarding. Two parts were only just format changes to match prior sections in that code section. And one was the addition of some regulations addressing the slope of roof lines in residential design standards. And those were standards that I had had adopted in other jurisdiction that I worked with previously, that was quite successful in eliminating very low-sloped roofs, which we find in a lot less quality construction. There would be exceptions to that from an architectural standpoint, if it were like a modern house, and if it was going to conform to the infill ordinance section of the code, which would allow a little more flexibility. But as a general standard for new construction, for new homes, not in infill situation, those would be a very standard industry code to have that, that variation between the four over twelve and the twelve over twelve. That's a, essentially, a four-foot, for every four feet in height, the structure goes from the top, from the bottom of the roof line up, there would be a twelve-foot run, and also up to a twelve and a twelve at that. So, I wanted to just make that little comment. It was just one little keynote that was, that came up due to a request for staff to come and do a, a site visit that a developer has in Noonan, and there was, there was an architectural quality issue that I thought really needed to be entered into the code, just to ensure that we were covering all of our, all of our bases. So, that said, I have nothing additional to. I have nothing additional to add to the ordinance itself. It's gone through first reading, second reading, now, uh, a, a, a third public hearing and hopefully a, a final adoption. So, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer them for you.
Okay, let me first ask the council if, I just wanna know if you did not receive it and, and if you feel like you need to receive, uh, that, that edit that he sent earlier today.
I've, I've got it printed too, I think.
Okay.
I saw.
Okay, all right, I just, I, I, all right, so we're good with, with what he just presented. So, uh, are there any questions for Chris? Okay, there being no questions, let me open this up for a public hearing. Uh, at this time, if there is anybody, uh, here who would like to speak for or against, uh, the new Villarica zoning ordinance, please come forward. Okay, seeing no takers, I will close the, uh, public hearing portion of the Villarica zoning ordinance, uh, and official zoning map, public hearing. Uh, let's now move to part B, adoption of the Villarica zoning ordinance.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Villarica zoning ordinance.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adopt the Villarica zoning ordinance. Uh, is there any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor? That is unanimous. That is good work, Chris. It's been a long time coming.
It's been a long time coming.
I'd like to make another motion to adopt the official.
Well, hold on, we're gonna do a public hearing first. So, now I wanna do a public hearing for the adoption of the official zoning map. Is there anyone here, uh, who would like to speak for or against the adoption of the official zoning map? All right, seeing no takers, I'll close the public hearing portion, and do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the official zoning map for the city of Villarica.
Second.
I have a motion to adopt the official zoning map for the city of Villarica, do, and I have a second. All in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. We have now gotten those two things out of the way. Uh, it's been a long time coming. A lot of good work, and a lot of hard work went into that. Um, we will now move on. We're gonna get Mr. Johnson back. We're gonna see, uh, community development number three, CU dash zero-one dash twenty, special use permit slash conditional use permit for a truck stop with convenience store and accessory truck and RV parking. There'll also be a public hearing on this. Uh, go ahead, Ron.
All right, um, Viral Patel of Marietta, Georgia, uh, is requesting a, a special use permit or special exception, um, permit to construct a truck stop with a convenience store attached and accessory truck parking, um, for property located on the northwest corner of Georgia Highway one oh one in Industrial Court, uh, West. The parcel number is V zero-three zero-one zero-zero-zero-three-seven, and, uh, the property's ten acres in total. Um, the truck stop application, uh, currently the property's vacant right now. Um, there's nothing on it. It has been vacant for at least twenty years now. Um, and the zoning ordinance, uh, requires that all truck stops go before the city council for a special exception permit. This is actually our first application that will be under the new zoning ordinance, as you can imagine. Um, and there's a total, uh, I have a, a four different, uh, conditions should the council wish to approve this application tonight.
Okay, uh, council, do you have any questions for Ron? All right, so what you have here is, uh, a recommendation to approve the special use permit for a truck stop, but subject to these, is there four conditions?
Yes, it's a total of four.
My computer is slow here. Okay, um, that is going to require a public hearing. So, if you have no questions for council now, let me, uh, for staff, let me, uh, do the public hearing, and we'll see where we're at, okay? At this time, if there is anybody here who would like to speak for or against the special use permit slash conditional use permit, please come forward. May not be necessary, it's your prerogative, though. This is a public hearing.
Just again, I would like to reiterate.
Would you pull the mic down?
Sorry.
No problem.
That it is a very traffic congested area already in our community. Um, and I really would like you to take that into consideration, all of the different effects that will come from bringing in a truck stop into the area. There are already a lot of four-wheel vehicles and, uh, fourteen-wheel vehicles coming in there. Um, and, again, not that I want to hinder industrial growth in Villarica or anything else, but without some sort of means being put in place to help the traffic there, it is going to be, um, it's gonna be very dangerous. Um, it's a, it's a miracle that something bad has not already happened at that intersection since the turning lanes have been put in. You cannot see, um, I believe some of you said you were out there earlier today and have been looking. Um, it, it is extremely difficult to get in and out there, and if there is a train, um, the traffic is backed up way further and, and it, you have to wait until all, everybody gets through going. Um, and it's not just traffic, it's also, it's also the environmental side of it. So, if you would please take that into consideration because it is a Georgia designated wetland area part of the area there.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lafitte. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against? Okay, uh, with that being, uh, the case, uh, no other takers, I will close the public hearing portion. And I would just say this, staff, Ron, come back up. One of the, and, and please don't take this to be, uh, for or against this in any way, but ma'am, there are a host of other requirements that these folks would need to meet were they to get past this first step here tonight. So, all of the concerns you raise will, will not be set aside. That, 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 there is a lot to be done after this, were they to move on from tonight? Okay, I think it's important for the public to know that, that that's, that even if this were to be approved tonight, that doesn't mean they're gonna start moving dirt tomorrow. All right, council, do you have any questions for staff?
I just, I'm sorry, I just had one other thing. Uh, we received, uh, multiple objections also to the application. Um, two, uh, two of the, uh, folks who object are here tonight, and, um, I don't know if I can say their name or should, should or should not, but, uh, we already heard from one, from, uh, two people tonight already in objection to it, and, and, um, those, we, we had two other people as well that objected, um, so that's a total of four.
Wait, are your objections, uh, you have written objections?
They're, these are the two written objections.
And you say those people are here tonight?
Yes.
If they wanted to speak, they would have spoken.
It's one person, really. They just objected personally and, but their business as well.
Okay.
And their, their written objections, uh, should be entered into the record.
Yeah, please make that part of the record.
Okay.
And Ron, I'm sorry, for those who, you said there have been other, other objections, though they're not here tonight or have not submitted.
Yes.
So, could you give me, could you give us a summary of what those objections were?
Yes, um, one of the objections, uh, came in yesterday afternoon, um, and it was, uh, it was from a, an elected official, and they were, uh, concerned with crime and the potential for crime, um, and, uh, the police calls that might potentially come to this facility. Uh, that was their, their only concern that, um, that's in remembrance. And the other, um, applicant had also concerns with traffic as well.
Okay. Uh, any, anyone else have any questions for staff? Okay.
Yes, oh.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, um, because of the conditions that are required, because this is one of my concerns. I have things where I go, hey, trucks have to move all over the country delivering things, and if they had no truck stops, and I drive an RV and we go to truck stops, we may not spend the night. Okay, so I know they're necessary. Location is another issue. I, I do wanna ask, and then I, maybe I should ask you the environmental question and the applicant, but one of the conditions has to do with these traffic studies, and that's one of my biggest concerns, is the location. So, even if we said, yes, we're okay with this, I noticed that we're only okay with it if there's a middle of a traffic study of the intersection, um, completion of all necessary off-site traffic improvements, subject to the requirements of the city engineer and GDOT. So, if I were concerned about the location, the traffic, how they're gonna get in, how they're gonna get out, everything else that's getting stuck on that road, going up to the three-way stop until we get our bypass and roundabout, and, because that will be our main truck route through town instead of them weaving out here and knocking our walls down and that thing. Tell me, how does that come into play? So, if we said yes, but we have a concern about traffic and that, how does this come into play?
Sure. So, the, um, engineer, the city's engineer would have, uh, jurisdiction over West Industrial Court and would have to review any and all, um, changes or, um, permits for access to sites and, uh, and any sort of traffic mobility inside and outside of the site, going into the site and outside of it. Uh, the GDOT has jurisdiction over Georgia Highway one oh one and sixty-one, so they would also have to, uh, review the traffic, uh, standards that they have and see how the application, uh, stacks up to those. It may include acceleration and deceleration lanes. It may include a stoplight outside of, uh, or at this intersection, um, and turning lanes. Uh, so that's something that has to be reviewed. It's required to see, uh, engineer typically requires these studies, um, for sites that are, he anticipates to have large traffic volume. Um, and the engineer is here tonight as well to speak, um, more to that if necessary.
We all know one oh one is very busy. What if the engineered solutions are not so significant enough to mitigate the traffic problem? Is, what, what happens then?
If they can't, um, alleviate any of the traffic issues, uh, then essentially the project can't be, be built. It has to pass, go through the paces of our development code.
So, then is the applicant also protected in that sense before they invest a lot of money? Cause I, I mean, we wanna protect us. At the same time, I don't want them spending a whole lot of money to find out they can't do something. So, um, I'm guessing that this gets done relatively early, this, these studies to let them know, hey, you gotta be able to afford to do these decel la, lanes or whatever, and you have to pay for them, I'm assuming.
The, the majority of the necessities, the, the project has to be designed first. So, they're gonna spend money to an engineer to design the site. Uh, I know for a fact there are state waters that run through that site. Now, I don't know if it's, if they can work around that or not. I don't know, not till the design is done. But we will require a traffic study based on not only the comments that we've had from concerned folks, but our comments as well. In fact, I've been in the industrial park the last two days, and you can't barely walk across the street out there without getting run over. And then we're adding, we're gonna add a truck stop here. So, um, we will require, as part of my plan review, uh, as representative engineer for the city, I can require the traffic study on the front end before they do anything else. And based on that, the improvements that that traffic study, uh, recommends, A, GDOT's got to approve that because they have part jurisdiction, and then we have to approve the other. So, uh, they're gonna go pretty quick with a traffic study for probably less than ten thousand dollars. How bad the traffic situation is gonna be dealt with. Uh, but, but the design features of the site, they're, they're gonna have to spend some money to do that.
But that's after the traffic study.
Yeah.
So, then my environmental question, you won't know till you see a site, site plan. So, I would really have to direct that question to them as if they think they can work around, uh, whatever we've got over there as far as streams and the requirements to protect the wetlands or whatever.
So, there, there are two streams that go through the property, and, um, I, I just heard word from the applicant earlier tonight that one of those streams supposedly was diverted a, a couple of years ago at the property line, the northern property line, um, and it goes encircling the site. But I haven't had any sort of, uh, documentation to that effect or anything like that, but I would, um, definitely defer to the applicant as far as the, uh, the stream itself and, um, where that stream is, or if they, if that stream still is on the property, they might be able to give some testimony to that.
So, we don't have a recom, a recommendation that has to, that takes care of that, but ultimately there's state guidelines and everything else.
Oh, yeah.
That, that's protected one way or another, so we don't have to put it in our staff recommendations.
That's right.
Cause they have to find a way to work around it appropriately with the right buffers.
And yes, the seventy-five-foot buffer is still in effect.
Okay.
We, we have a whole set of development regulations. Uh, in fact, there's twelve sections that we use on every single project that's developed, uh, that, that, that's after the zoning question has been dealt with, uh, that everybody has to go through that. Um, so, you know, we, I like to pride myself on knowing how to review and been in, doing it a long time, but, uh, all those hoops they've got to go through. And everything concerning GDOT, we pitch to GDOT. We don't have any jurisdiction. The developer has to go to GDOT and get them satisfied before they come and get permits from us.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Ron, um, so the site plan has a generic kind of a, it's not really to scale from what I can tell. Um, it says forty-eight total spaces. If you count the spaces, it doesn't get close to forty-eight, uh, for the truck parking, and then it has additional, uh, uh, un, un, numbered amount and future truck parking, and it has an unnumbered amount for the RV parking. So, do we know how many trucks they're anticipating having enough parking for?
Um, the applicant hasn't specified that. Um, I think he kinda left it open-ended with that section on the far western side that says future, uh, future truck parking. Um, so right now, it's kind of an open question mark.
And do we know how many, I mean, the RV parking also doesn't have any amount, even though that's not designated as future. It says sixty-five spaces shown, but it's not clear whether that's RV parking or is that automobile and RV parking. Uh, do you have that information, or could the applicant please perhaps provide that information?
I'm just seeing what you're, uh, referring to here, I'm sorry. Uh, I took that to be sixty-five parking spaces in, inside this entire, uh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to, inside the entire area here, we're, are surrounding the auto fuel pumps and the RV, including the RV parking. Uh, but I'll, I'll defer to the applicant to, um, given, give more testimony on that.
Thank you, Ron.
I'm, uh, Dudley Freeman, C.D. Freeman Design Services, and I drew the plan that you're looking at.
Okay.
And, um, we actually had very rudimentary information to plan that. If this were Shangri-La, that's what we would want. Uh, but taking into consideration the, uh, the DOT requirements that we know we're gonna have, the, um, wetlands, uh, the jurisdiction of wetlands is gonna take a certain part of that. And unknowns out there with the topography, uh, we don't know, we haven't done any geotext, uh, studies or anything like that, so we don't know exactly how big this is gonna be. But this is just to, for you guys to have a general idea of what we want to do out there.
Do you have, do you have a best-case scenario for your applicant or for your client as to maximum amount that you believe you could put out there?
Pretty much what's shown.
Okay.
But there again, the city has, I'm sure they have ordinances, uh, to a minimum amount of parking spaces. But as far as maximum, just, uh, and most of those truck parking spaces are gonna be for truckers who will deliver things, um, to the bakery or whatever, and they've gotta layover for a few hours. That's all they'll do, is just park there for a little while, and then, um, then they'll leave and go on their route.
So, when you say the, what's shown on there, are you referring, is that including the future truck parking? Or is that a entirely separate phase?
No, if that, well, that would be a, a separate phase if we feel like we need it.
Okay.
But, uh.
So, for example, the reference to forty-eight total spaces for truck parking, it does, it does or does not include the future truck parking portion?
It does not include the future portion.
Okay.
There, there may be a hundred if you, if we were to count them, uh, if, but since I didn't know exactly, uh, what area we would have left for parking, we just didn't, you know, we just showed that graphically on here, but it's not, uh, specific to a number of parking. And if, um, the city engineer says, hey, look, we really don't want more than X amount of parking on here, then that's what we'll go by.
Next question is, um, our experience with, or at least I would say my, um, investigation into truck stops nearby, particularly a couple in Temple. into truck stops nearby, particularly a couple in Temple, showed that there's a significant amount of trucks. In fact, the, last night, the entire RV parking for the Flying J was consumed with trucks. So does your client have any policy or provisions to limit the ability of trucks from using those RV parking spaces or parking in areas that were not supposed to be? Like for example, where the underground fuel tanks are?
Yeah. Well, I don't think that we have any specific right now. But there again, if the city engineer decides, hey, look, we need to designate these as RV parking spaces only, then I'm sure that, you know, we could follow that guy, follow his, follow his guidelines on that.
And so even if that's, and that would be, who would enforce that though? Even if we were to put something like that?
I suppose the owner would have to enforce it, but I mean, I don't.
And that, that goes back to my question about, is there, does the company have a policies or procedures on how they go about enforcing that? For example, do they have security officers that go out and, and inform these truckers that they, you know, are in violation of the parking areas and so forth?
I don't think there is anything like that.
There is nothing like that.
There's nothing like that now. But, but if we saw that that would be a problem, I'm sure that would be.
And so, and so, I mean, what would be the proposed remedy of that if that were to be the problem?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want to be short, but I.
No, I completely understand. It sounds like it's more work for our PD though, unfortunately.
Right. I mean, but i- if it becomes a serious problem, then we, then obviously the owners would have to make some, you know, have some regulations and some signs. Look, you guys don't need to be here. We've got RVs sitting out here that can't park in the parking spaces, you know?
Right. And this city's experience with putting signs up to stop trucks from doing stuff, has it been very great? So.
Well, I can't answer that.
Understood. Not, it's not your issue. I, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any other questions for the applicant or for staff? Thank you, sir. Staff, I'm going to turn this back over to staff. Is there any questions for staff? If there is not, I will entertain some motion.
I would just say, I've had some mixed feelings on this one. I, I really have. And that's why I made some additional calls, contacts. I feel better seeing the requirements that staff wants upfront because you don't want me doing the traffic study, right? You don't want me deciding, can this be accommodated if they do these decel lines, I mean, lanes and these other accommodations? GDOT has people that know how to do that. We've got to send a engineer. I'm not one to make those decisions. I just know we got traffic issues out there. And none of them, none of us particularly want to see them get worse, although we also know eventually we're going to have the roundabout and that sort of thing. So I, I'm at least a little bit more at ease and, and that there's going to be checks and balances along the way. If we approve this, doesn't mean it's happening. There's a whole bunch of other hoops to jump through. So that makes me feel at least better than I initially did with a lot of concerns. Council member had some concerns with, you know, crime and, and that to me is an enforcement issue. I mean, that can come, I realize with almost anything, whether it's trafficking, prostitution, whatever. At the same time, you can't not have no truck stops across the country. So anyway, sorry. I'm still kind of, I think, kind of fleshing through it, but I think I'll be ready to go.
Okay.
Sorry, Mayor.
Let's do this. Let's get a, let's see if we're going to get a motion first. And then if we want to do some more discussion, we can see if we get a motion in a second.
I make a motion to deny the special use permit for a truck stop with convenience store on parcel number V030100037, as requested by Mr. Viral Patel.
Okay. I have a motion to deny the special use permit for a truck stop with convenience store on parcel number V030100037 with aforementioned conditions as presented and as requested by, by Viral Patel. Is there a second? Okay, if there is.
I will second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to deny the request. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor of the denial? All opposed? Okay. The motion is denied. The, the request is denied. I'm sorry. The request is denied. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, did you get that? Did you get that count? All right. Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay. Let me take up C5 real quick. Is there any reason why we cannot make a motion to, to remove this item from the agenda right now so these folks can leave?
It'd be good if they just withdrew their application. They could just withdraw it because it's moot now.
Should they do it here or should they just?
They can just state that they withdraw their application.
All right. Would you all say that? And then I'm going to move on.
So just to clarify, I know we've got some, our plans have been, I guess, through this community development, I guess we'd be starting over with the new site plan and everything. But I just want to make sure that we're, what I'm hearing tonight basically is that we're going to fall into the new ordinance that was adopted tonight.
Right. And that there is no longer this principal maximum number of structures requirement. Therefore, we don't have any reason to consider that.
So they won't have to, there's be no application for a variance because a variance won't be required?
Right.
Does that work?
That's for multiple buildings now.
Ron, yeah, I understand what y'all, where y'all come from and it makes sense on a lot of, on a lot of fronts. I just want to make sure without me having read this new ordinance and being familiar with it, I just want to make sure there's not other stipulations in this new ordinance that isn't going to tie me into something unexpected, I guess, up to this point.
It will.
It will?
We got staff saying no. I mean.
Okay. So we have, we have the city manager saying no, we have staff.
Where's Chris? He's the expert.
Somebody's got clarified.
Part of me wonders why, if we're all in favor of multiple buildings on a piece of property, why the variance just couldn't be approved, knowing that every building or every site.
Yeah. I mean, with, with that kind of confusion, I would feel the same way. Is there any, is there a motion? Can somebody pull this back up and just make a motion to approve this?
Yeah. Let me make a motion to approve the variance request from Wayne Doyle of International Component Repair to construct three additional buildings and as indicated in the supplied site plan exhibit.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I will vote for it only because we passed this new zoning ordinance.
Well, okay. This is just to clarify this up. And sir, I, I appreciate your concern and, and it is granted. So, thank you, Ron. Where are we at now? We're going to take up C3, no, C4, Revision to the Alcoholic Beverage Ordinance and Public Hearing. Thanks, sir. Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
All right. This is a revision. We have these revisions every once in a while now. But this is a revision to establish some different parameters and licensing for hotels to distribute malt beverages specifically in order to, and we're trying to regulate this activity here in the city. Currently, it's not something that's actually regulated. The hotels are, it would apply to hotels with 50 rooms or more and also with hotels that have interior doorways. They have to have both of these two criteria in the lease. And there's several other supplementary regulations to be found in the ordinance as well. And that's it. That's all I have.
Okay. And counsel, you've had a chance to review this already. So let me do a public hearing on this. And then we will see if we can get a motion and then maybe some discussion. Okay. At this time.
Require a public hearing? No, I didn't think.
Well, we have one on the agenda, so I'm going to do a public hearing. Please let me, all right. At this time, if you want to speak for or against this item, please come forward. All right. Seeing nobody come forward, this will revert back for a motion from the council or questions for staff.
I'll make a motion to approve the revision to the alcoholic beverage ordinance to allow for hotels to gift malt beverages to overnight guests.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? All in favor? That is four. All opposed? That is one. You got that, Madam Assistant Clerk? Okay. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
We will now move on for Fund from Economic Development. D, Ms. Janet Chumley, you had a long time to wait tonight. I apologize.
No worries.
It's the longest meeting I've been in. D1, 2020 alcohol license agreement with the Olive Tree for Gold Rush Summer Concert on Friday, September the 11th, 2020 at the Mill Amphitheater. Take it away.
Yes, sir. So you all consented earlier tonight to have, allow us to have a summer, a summer concert for the Gold Rush Festival on Friday, September 11th. This would be a license agreement with the Olive Tree and the City of Villarica to provide the sale of beer and wine for the September 11th Gold Rush Summer Concert at the Mill Amphitheater Friday, September 11th from 7:30 PM to 10:00 PM.
Okay. We did discuss this. Is there any questions from counsel to staff? All right. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the license agreement with the Olive Tree to provide the sale of beer and wine for 2020 Gold Rush Summer Concert on Friday, September 11th, 2020 at the Mill Amphitheater from 7:30 PM to 10:00 PM.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. As I said before, I am glad that we were able to continue with this. I hope that this goes off without a hitch. And I know we've made some accommodations, but this has been going on as long as I've been alive. And the gentleman earlier talked about 1975. That's about where that started. And I appreciate that we're going to do this. So with that, all in favor? All opposed? All right. It's four, one. Okay. Do you have anything else on here? Special event permit at Sticks Bar and Grill for October 3rd, October 3rd, 2020, and to provide beer and wine. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. So this is a special event permit for Sticks Bar and Grill with the City of Villarica to provide the sale of beer and wine at the Villarica Police Department's Black the Blue Get Invested Fundraising Concert held Saturday, October 3rd at the Mill Amphitheater from 7:30 PM to 10:30 PM. This special event permit is a fundraising concert I mentioned earlier to, in an effort to raise money for the active shooter response vest and the external plate carriers that go with those.
That, no. Okay. Okay. I appreciate that. Do we have any questions for staff? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
I move to recommend approval of the special event for Sticks Bar and Grill to provide the sale of beer and wine at the Villarica Police Department Back the Blue Get Invested Fundraising Concert to be held Saturday, October 3rd from 7:30 PM till 10:30 PM at the Mill Amphitheater.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? All right. That carries four to one. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to our CFO, Ms. Sarah Andrews. E1, Financial Update for June 2020. And we have a handout. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is our financial update for June 2020. So this is nine months through our fiscal year. First, wanted to update you on our cash balances. Uh-oh. There it is. All right. So this is a comparison of June 30th of last year to June 30th of this year. You can see our total cash has gone from 14.5 million to 18.7 million. The general fund and the water and sewer fund have grown since last year. Sanitation and solid waste, at this point last year, we had a negative balance in that cash account. I've said this before, that does not mean we have a negative bank balance. That means our system tracks as part of our operating checking account what's, what fund is owed what money. And in that situation, the fund actually owed money back to the pooled cash account. So now it's a positive $24,000 and we're losing our screens. All right. And those last three items are our SPOLOST accounts. The top SPOLOST account, we are not still receiving money for, but we do have a balance there that needs to be spent on capital projects. And those bottom two SPOLOST are our current SPOLOST projects. Those have grown substantially from last year. However, we're about to do this street project that y'all approved tonight, so we'll be cutting down on those balances very soon. For growth, again, this is through June. So this is our fiscal year, not necessarily a calendar year, but our fiscal year showing new construction for building permits. At this point in our fiscal year, last year, we had done 175. And this year, even with COVID, we have done 249. I think they had a record month in this June. People were catching up from the months that they were at home, I guess. So, so far this year, we have done almost 250 building permits. That's residential. This is our water and sewer net income statement. And you can look at the bottom line. Our net income at this point in the fiscal year this year is almost 700,000 compared to last year, we are at 434. So this is after three aggressive rate increases. Thank you, Mayor and Council. You have righted the ship as far as water and sewer goes. Used to have a negative cash balance, used to not be having net income, and now you can see the improvement there. One of the big reasons for that change was for the debt expense. You can see in the second section, second from the bottom, debt expense grew significantly this year. But the rate increases allowed us to be ready for that. Also, with all the projects that Pete, Pete brings you every month, every meeting, this has given us cash to be able to handle some of those projects. So again, those rate increases had purpose to them and we're starting to see the benefits of that. This is our sanitation and solid waste net income statement. On the cash side, you saw that we had a negative cash position at this point last year. So now we have positive cash in this fund and you can see we have a net income of 61,000. So again, we have corrected this fund, making it self-sustaining as well. Self-funded insurance, we've been on this plan since October of 2017. That green box shows you our total savings. Since we have been on that plan, the orange box shows you the contributions that we make. So every time we have a payroll, we move money from our pooled cash account into our self-funded account. And then every time someone goes to the doctor, we have a third party that handles the claims for us, but we pay the doctors and the prescription expenses out of this account. They draft the money from us weekly. And you can see in the red box that we have saved 276,000 just this fiscal year. So remember that in the last two budget years, we've only funded 90% of this. So we've had even more savings. They don't reflect here, but that was money that was still in the general fund. So we were able to leave that, those funds in the general fund and not actually have to budget them towards the insurance premiums. And then just wanted to give an update. So I've been sending the council the updates on the sales tax numbers, which have not been as bad as we were kind of wondering they would be for the COVID time period, but didn't want to paint just a rosy picture. Water and sewer is doing great. Sanitation's doing great. But those funds were not necessarily affected by COVID. So let's remember our buckets. In governmental accounting, we have different buckets for things. So water and sewer is doing fine. Sanitation is doing fine. People are still paying their water bills. Problem is the general fund. So while sales tax has not been as bad as we kind of wondered, our biggest loss is revenue that was lost and other, we are going to use fund balance for different things like the 80,000 that was approved for the LED lights for Georgia Power, that one-time payment we did earlier in the year. Well, we were paying that out of fund balance. We didn't know that this was about to happen. We knew, I expected that we would have had revenue that could have made up for that. That hasn't been the case necessarily this year. So I just wanted to kind of give an idea of where we are in revenue projections for the rest of this fiscal year. So what I've just shown you is through June. We have three more months that you haven't seen yet for this fiscal year. So we're doing revenue projections to show us where we'll stand at the end of this fiscal year. So when we look at what we expect to get in revenue compared to what is budgeted in revenue, this is where we stand. So at this point, water and sewer, we expect to land at 277,000 over budget. Again, this is, I don't have a crystal ball. This is a projection. Sanitation, we expect to have 8,000 over revenue over what was budgeted. But hotel and general fund is where we start to see the loss. Again, this is just the revenue projections. So hotel fund, we're expecting to see about a $20,000 loss. So that's just the revenue side. And in general fund, we're seeing about 900,000 where we will have less revenue than what was budgeted. So just wanted to get y'all understanding what we're seeing there.[1786.82] So just wanted to get y'all understanding what we're seeing there. Any questions on this slide?
Probably just clarification. The Water and Sewer, when we talk about being 277,000 over, that's what allows us to make those additional repairs and maintenance. In other words, not just pay for Water and Sewer, but the infrastructure that has to be taken care of and everything.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
This is just revenue, it's not expenses. So we still have expenses for the things that weren't pulling in revenue, like Parks and Rec, the library, Pine Mountain Gold Museum. We're maintaining all those facilities and salaries and things, but no income is coming in. That's part of that 893,000 revenue loss, but we still have expenses on all those things.
Correct.
Right, and I appreciate the clarification really from both of you, because at first glance, it does look like, oh, wow, you have an extra quarter of a million dollars, but it's like if you're at home and you have a, you know, you have $5,000 in the bank, but you have $25,000 in immediate expenses that you need to meet. That money may be in the bank, but it is well-spent. It should already have been spent, but we don't have enough to do the repairs that we need to do. So I like clarifying that so folks understand where we're at. We don't have extra money. By any stretch, we don't have extra money. Counsel, anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you, Sarah. Thank you for that update. I see we're still doing pretty good on the self-funded insurance. I'm still satisfied that we've made a good decision on that. We're three years into it. The next item on the agenda will be F1, the Smoke-Free Air Ordinance. Tom, are you going to present this?
I can get started.
Okay.
We have asked the city attorney to work on some semblance of a set of possible motions based on the conversation from Thursday. So David took a stab at it, and we sent that to everybody, and then Avery took a stab at it, and I didn't, I didn't send that to everybody, but I have those if we want to talk about them. I have talked to everybody on council and have sort of an idea of what people are thinking and what their concerns are and the pros and cons from their position. There is definitely not a consensus on a lot of this. There may be three votes one way on some things and two the other, and a different vote on other parts of it, but the issues that David and I have talked about are specifically, are we going to let restaurants that restrict the age of their customer to allow smoking? Are we, if we do something with that provision or not? It seems to me that there's a consensus that we continue to not allow smoking in service lines, which isn't in the state law, but in our ordinance. Seems to be like, I'm close to universal agreement that y'all like that. And then the regulation of e-cigarettes seems to be not contentious. So to me, the issue is the first leg of this thing. At least, that's my take from talking with y'all. Are we going to allow restaurants to restrict their customer age and in return allow smoking in their building or not? So that's, that's sort of where I think everybody is starting, and then where we go from that is up to y'all.
Okay, from a staff perspective, Mr. Mecklen or Mr. Jackson, do you either, let's get David a microphone if we could. No, no, we have a handheld for you, David.
I agree with Tom what the sort of key issues are, and since Thursday, we've tried to piecemeal together something that we think that expressed what the council was talking about on Thursday. I think it would be helpful for y'all to make some sort of decision on that, sort of that key question, and then allow us to put together a comprehensive ordinance in writing that you could vote on, because there are several bits and pieces to this that aren't all joined together. One of those I sent to you today, which is that in our existing ordinance, the one that's been in place but has not been enforced, there was a requirement that every non-smoking business in town, which is essentially every business in town, was supposed to have a sign on their place of business prohibiting smoking. We never enforced that, and I'm not sure that we even recognized that that was a part of the ordinance. That needs to change because it doesn't, I mean, that's up to y'all to make that decision, but clearly it's something we haven't enforced for years now.
It probably wouldn't surprise me to think that in 2012, it was more relevant, but in eight years, it's not so relevant.
That's true.
Because in eight years, people have moved away from smoking, so that's probably why it's less relevant today. If we went back and looked at any number of laws for 10 or 12 years ago, maybe some things we'd say, doesn't matter that much anymore. But if we're going to amend it, we could make that change. Go ahead.
Yeah, what my suggestion to you today would be is to vote, to give us some direction on that main key point as to whether or not you want to go back to allow over 21 restaurants to limit, to allow smoking in their facilities. And if you can give us that guidance, then we can put together a complete ordinance for you to vote on in a meeting as soon as you can have it. But right now, I'm concerned about you voting on a final ordinance that's in approximately three pieces right now.
So if we could get what would be a big piece of if it changes or not, that one, which for me, I also think we need to look at, and these are separate little pieces, so I don't know how they all get put together, with the private clubs. Private clubs doesn't fit in that 21 and up. I mean, it's a different thing. It's just a, it's a private club.
It is, and I think you could do that just by separate motions tonight to give us some direction on it.
Okay.
To find out if a majority of the council supports it for over 21 restaurants, whether the majority of the council supports it for private clubs. If you can do that, then we can draw up a comprehensive ordinance.
So break everything down, make a motion for the different aspects. Okay, all right, so are we ready to go?
No, that seems like a, okay, that sounds like a mess.
I have more questions.
So you got a question real quick? All right, go ahead.
It's either for David or Avery. Hypothetically, if we approve an amendment to allow restaurants that limit their age of their patrons, how do we enforce that? What mechanisms are available to the police department to ensure that everybody inside that facility or establishment is 21 or older?
Well, I'll tell you how the federal government enforces there. So the federal government has the smoke, the age to buy tobacco products is 21 and over, and the FDA enforces that regulation, and they send in undercover people that are under the age of 21 in compliance checks, and that's how, that's how they check their ordinance. So that would be one method that could be available.
They have more money than we do.
Right, but that is essentially how we ensure that no one buys beer under the age of 21 as well.
So.
VRPD does that, so it's not something that's entirely out of the atmosphere of the possibility.
Is there a frequency range for such inspections that would be reasonable?
That's up to the enforcing agency, what they feel would be appropriate in that circumstance.
I mean, we do that now for alcohol, so.
My last question is, would the establishment have an obligation to check the ages of people as they enter the establishment? Would somebody under the age that walked in the door and sat down, would that establishment be in violation immediately?
Effectively, yes. I mean, they would, they would have the obligation to check and ensure that the people coming in were 21 and up, and if people under the age of 21 and up were coming in and they were allowing smoking, then they would be in violation. So effectively, they would have to check.
Pull that microphone a little closer to you. Okay, what else you got, Ms. Young? Okay, so let me say this. In all, you know, seriousness, this didn't get earnestly discussed until probably yesterday, maybe a little bit on Thursday, but the truth is that if this had been earnestly discussed, we'd have a motion here tonight to be voted on, and whether it passed or not, we would then see what happened with it after that, because I'll have the option to weigh in on it. What I think we should do is let you all continue the conversations that you've been having, table this item, and let Mr. Mecklen and Mr. Jackson work with all of you to come up with some sort of a consensus, because this idea of piecemeal voting on this is a mess, and it doesn't make any sense, really. You all know what you want to do. Each of you have your own positions. Let's put something together that you, that they agree would be the most likely to fit what you're looking for, and let's see what happens with it. That makes more sense to me.
Okay, but the problem is every time we delay, it also affects businesses, and if we took one at a time, like if we said, okay, how many people think we should allow 21 and up and smoking? We could go, okay.
But that don't change the law.
I, no, but it gives them direction.
They're taking direction right now. Walk out there and look.
Look, I would, I would actually just defer to David to see, would he want the council to give him that piecemeal direction, or would he want the council to table it for, I think that would.
I think that the one thing that would be helpful to me in finalizing this, and I agree that you should not vote on it tonight until we get any written ordinance all in one piece.
Okay.
The one thing that would help me tonight is to know that if there are any of you that have strong objections to going back to allowing restaurants to limit their patronage to over 21 and allow smoking.
Okay, as a matter of consensus vote, let's do that. Why don't you ask your question, and then I'll ask for a consensus vote.
Even if we don't have a consensus, if any of you have a strong objection to that, because if four of you have a strong objection to it, that will help me guide, help guide me in writing up an ordinance.
Okay.
But if you, you know, if I don't hear strong objections to it, I'm going to assume that there's a consensus that we can go back to that.
All right, are there any strong objections to going back?
I have a strong objection to it.
To what? I'm not hearing it.
To going back to allowing businesses to limit their business to age 21 and up and allowing smoking in their building?
Bars and restaurants, bars and restaurants, not businesses generally.
Okay.
I have no objection.
No objection.
I have no objection to that.
I think that gives me enough guidance that I can draw you up an ordinance that will be holding in place, and we'll have it at one of our next either special or regular meetings.
Okay, so should we consider any of the other amendments, or we would do that then?
If you have strong feelings about that, go ahead and send them to me now.
So if I wanted to include private clubs, do I, if I thought that private clubs should be included?
Let's ask that question now, the same way you did.
All right, go ahead.
Well, real quick, David, though, and I did some just research. What is a, can you distinguish a private club? Because I did, you know, I did some kind of just general legal research, and there are certain things that define a private club. And so I don't, you know, obviously, we're not talking about the Boy Scouts here. We may not even be talking about the Lions Club, not such, for the general understanding of what is a private club. Could you give us some idea what that is?
I can give you an example would be the Veterans of Foreign Wars, which we have here in town. You know, if, if a group of 10 people decided they wanted to form a community club and limit their membership by themselves a building.
I would just say, I would like to see a definition of what a private club is, if we're going to find, consider a final ordinance on that.
Understood.
Okay, we have a special meeting in two weeks from today, 6 o'clock, to approve the Miller's rate, so that's our next meeting time.
I can have it ready within a couple of days.
Okay.
It had, it had been, I mean, we might as well find out where we stand on all this. It had been brought to my attention that Carrollton has a tobacco store, and they do smoke within that tobacco store. I don't know if they sample it, whatever. I don't hang out there. I don't smoke. I didn't even know it existed. So we probably should find out if there's any consensus for allowing that sort of thing, like a cigar bar. Would we allow that in this ordinance? And then lastly, maybe the sign thing. Do we have to do the sign thing now to decide on that, or?
I already know the consensus on the, on the sign thing.
Okay, okay. So you want to ask that question about?
On, and I was the one that raised this question, is that there are in existence stores that cater to people that smoke cigars specifically for that purpose, where you go in and sample cigars, whether or not, and that's a destination in a town, and whether or not you would want to allow that. You don't have to answer, because it's just being raised the first time tonight, but it would, it would help to get some feedback on that as to whether or not you would object to that or not.
I would object to that.
I have no objection.
No objection? That's kind of obvious.
You know, I would point out, too, that we didn't discuss on Thursday that our licensing specialist notified me last week that we had two applicants who inquired about opening hookah bars and lounges in town, and they were denied the right to enter an application under this ordinance here. There will come a time when probably, as some states have done, they will legalize marijuana, and I frankly don't want to hear, smell that or have it around my kids when I'm out on the street. So, you know, I'm going to be strongly opposed to that, and when it comes down to it, I'll do whatever I need to do to exert that. So do you have all the questions?
I think I've got enough answers.
All right, let me get a motion to table this to the special call meeting that's coming up.
So move.
Do, let's get the date.
Okay, it's the 25th, I believe, at 6.
Do we know what it is? Who knows? Sarah? August 25th, okay.
6:00 p.m.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, because I didn't have notes on everything. I know we included the service line, and I wanted to go further than the current ordinance in one aspect and see if we have consensus on this. Where there's a patio area, if the restaurant slash bar has a patio that's 50% the size of the service space inside, they can designate 20% of that smoking. I think that's kind of ridiculous, and I think the current ordinance allows it. I say it should be non-smoking, because it makes no sense to go out there and sit with your family and have 20% over here that's smoking and you're still in it. And the 21 and above, if they're allowed, then they are already okay in their facility. This is about other locations.
So you don't, so what you're asking is whether we would restrict smoking even, in other words, just remove the exemption?
Correct.
There's one exemption in there that deals with outdoor patio smoking at places that do not require the age.
Right.
Right? Okay, because that would be the state part. Is there anyone who would be opposed to removing that exemption?
No opposition to removing that exemption.
If you remove the exemption and you change the ordinance to allow people to smoke in a restaurant, if they have a patio outside, that's part of the restaurant, they would be allowed to smoke at the patio.
Well, right now, they could go smoke at the Mexican restaurant on the patio if they had the right footage and they gave 20% over.
No, but they don't have the right footage. But if somebody did have, and there was no, no requirement, if the restaurant was allowed to smoking inside the restaurant and they had a patio, the ordinance would allow them to have smoking outside the restaurant at the patio.
Right.
Without an exemption.
Okay, I didn't see it as applying to the 21 and up. Am I wrong?
Well, I think what he's trying to say, and I kind of, I think it's, I can see that issue as well, is that now you've allowed the bars and restaurants that have 21 over. If they have a patio, well, now they can theoretically have a patio and allow smoking out there as well. So in my opinion, you would then allow the bars and restaurants 21 over, but then exclude outdoor patios from being permitted to have that.
That's not my intention. My intention was the ones that don't allow smoking, but if they have a patio, that's 50% of the interior service area, they can make 20% of it smoking.
I hear everything you're saying, and I understand.
I don't know where the.
You're talking about a common sense issue. They're talking about a different issue, and I think we can make all that work.
Okay.
Let me get you a draft.
Okay.
That's a good thing.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have anything else?
Nope.
All right, so I have a motion to table this to the August 25th special called meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor? Okay, it is tabled, and we will make sure that it is on that agenda. Madam Clerk. Okay, at this time, we are going to go into executive session. I need a motion. I need a motion, and you want to do, oh, city managers' report.
All right, we have completed the playground at Goldust, and the sod is now safe to walk on, so that playground is up and running. We still have a stormwater issue to deal with, with a culvert out there, so we'll probably have a couple of days that it's closed in the future, but it's open for operation. Uh, we're continuing to work on the transportation study. There is a draft report. We have responded to it. We've gotten comments back. We are looking for dates and protocols to do some more, um, public input so that people can see the draft report and give us feedback, so we're working on that. The replacement of all six of the stormwater culverts in our industrial park, which you approved some weeks ago, um, is underway. The, um, the contract for the 2020 paving, which is $2 million and a touch, has, that contract has been issued, and Bobby's working toward, um, a pre-construction meeting on that. We're continuing to work on the budget. Uh, I can't say that our ability to project is getting better, but it's definitely challenging, and we're working on it. We have made a huge water and sewer project list that spans multiple years. We've made a huge, what we call the winter project list. So this is things that our crews can work on when we're not cutting grass, the guys that would normally be cutting grass. Like last year, we painted, we redid, um, bathrooms, we redid concession buildings. We've got a huge list of that that we're working on. Nick is working on his. He's got a big one. If you've noticed, we're doing a lot of HVAC right now. So the library's been done. Uh, we've got the AC in the gym at Goldust that's percolating along. Uh, we're also beginning to work on the splash pad design, so we approved, um, to have Bob McAllister help us, so we're working on that. I had my first meeting with the head of the soccer association, who I had not ever met or spoken with, and got an idea of his view of capacity, demand, condition of the fields, and how they do recruiting, and where we fit into the West Georgia world of soccer. Um, his comment to me when I asked him, "How many fields do you need?", he said, "Twice as many." But that was pre-COVID. So we peaked at around 500 participants per season. We dropped down to about 400 last year, and we're in the last week of registration, and we're barely over 100. So registration has been very poor. We had our annual, um, meeting with the health insurance broker to talk about our renewal process for this year. We sort of have changed our focus a little bit. Our emphasis from renewal year to renewal year, those first couple of years, was financial and what can we do to reduce cost. This time, I think there's going to be more of an emphasis on what makes it a little bit more employee-friendly to use it, especially on the back end with the claims, getting paid, and collections and all that stuff. So we're going to be bringing you some new things on that. Uh, we still think we can save some money per person per year, but that's not really going to be the focus. Uh, Pete and I had a, a meeting with the Carroll County Water Authority folks. That contract expires in March of '25, and it is a biggie. We have a, we have a very, 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 very favorable contract right now that is going to become very, 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 very unfavorable in four and a half years. So we're talking about that. Stephanie and I interviewed candidates for the recreation director job. Department heads have also interviewed them and have made a unanimous recommendation. We'll be talking about that a little bit later. The mayor and staff met with some folks, well, actually, it was who, it was Bobby and I met with officials of Carroll County to talk about annexation, second industrial park, and all that kind of stuff. So we'll be talking about that in the future. Um, we have a trip planned to go to tour downtown Covington, so if you remember, we went to downtown Hateful not long ago and looked at all the murals and stuff. Uh, Ron and Chris have a trip planned to go look at another development in another city. So we're trying to get out some and go, go put our eyes on some things that are interesting to us, that we think maybe relate to things that we can do here in Villarica. Uh, we have leadership luncheon tomorrow. It is Zoom-based, but we're going to meet at the venue and eat and watch it together. So if you want to do that, you need to talk to Janet like two days ago or something. The speaker is going to be the CEO of Print Pack. That's Jimmy Love. I think that would be, um, a good one for you to attend. We had our, uh, an opportunity to make a presentation to Jifa for our Water First Design Nation, which would give us a reduction in interest on the Jifa loan. We have been waiting with bated breath, and we did not pass. So minimum score, uh, was a little bit higher than what we scored. They have given us two things to do that they think will get us there, so we have, we have homework to do now, but we think we can get there. Uh, we're continuing to work on the water treatment plant, and the whole water source thing and all that. You awarded the Edge Road water line and the Highway 78 water line extension. We think we're going to do Highway 78 first and then Edge Road, but it's all the same vendor, you remember? So the person doing the culvert is doing both the water lines. Um, we're continuing to work with Brennan on the whole Alamoor Sewer Regional Lift Station thing. We, if you remember, approved some surveying to be done out there, so we've got some elevations and some control points on that big topo change. If you go from the V-Plex to Hickory Level, you, you know, you're basically uphill, and then from Hickory Level to the water plant is just a huge drop in elevation. So we've got to spend a lot of money pumping to get it up the hill and then let gravity do its thing on the back end. The problem is, is that South Van Wert is not made to add sewer lines to. There's a great big concrete transmission lines out there. Carroll County Water has a water line on the west side that swaps to the east side, that goes back to the west side. It's going to be difficult, to say the least. Uh, schools you know about trying to reopen, I think that's critical for us. We've said many times in here that in order for us to fix the problems that we know about and the ones we don't know about, the only way we're going to generate that money is to grow. And for us to grow, the state economy's got to be growing. We're not going to outperform the state under any circumstances, I don't think. The state economy is dependent on the national economy. I mean, this is truly out of our hands, okay? But we need the economy to be strong, and I feel like for that to happen, school has got to operate as close to its former practice as possible. I finally have seen in a daily email that I get from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, one reference to the fact that having schools adopt a digital-only approach leaves literally, potentially, millions of school-aged parents who are working with a awful quandary of, do I quit my job to basically homeschool my kids because they can't go to school? Or do I go to work and latchkey my kids all day? That's the decision that some are going to be facing, including our staff. So we're talk, talking about crazy stuff like, you know, do we provide childcare to all of our employees who have that situation so that they can continue to come to work? I told you that I'm already, I've already been told about a school in our cluster that is going to offer class, even though their school potentially could be all digital, they're going to offer class to their faculty's children so that their faculty can work. Does that make sense? I don't know how that's going to play, but I've heard that, could be just a rumor, but sound like a good rumor. So we're going to have to be talking about that, because we can't have literally dozens of people unable to come to work because of childcare issues, because schools are closed. Because of digital learning, for them, effectively, is going to be the schools closed. Right? Because the kids are too young to be at home.
Doesn't anybody recognize the hypocrisy of that? You can have kids come into a facility together for daycare, but they can't do the same thing for school.
Is your, is your mic on?
Are you, are you finished?
Do I want to get in more trouble than that?
I just want to know if you're finished.
I don't think so.
In the future, uh, I would like you to prepare a copy of, of what you have for your manager's report and hand that out, uh, when we start. I think we used to do that, and then we didn't. Uh, counsel, do you have any questions? I, I get the comment. Any other questions for Tom? We've got, we've had a great deal going on. Um, okay, that being the case, that will wrap up our regular agenda. We will, uh, we, we have a personnel.
You're going into executive session. You're going into the executive session for the purpose of discussing hiring, firing, discipline of an employee.
All right, let me get a motion for that.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, have a motion in a second. All in favor to go into executive session? All right, we're in executive session. For people who can't just let this excitement go, you may wait around. Uh, we will come back.
One day.
Yes, sir. Are we ready to proceed?
I know.
Sorry. It's okay. You're going to the.
I'm going to call you.
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 I'll sign those, take those maps.
Oh, I got something for you.
It'll make your hair curl. It is hot in here.
It is not.
It is to me.
It has stayed at 75.
We got, we gotta get Nick in there or something. I can't do this.
City Hall's the same way right now.
Now, I'm telling you, when I get hot, I get grumpy.
Well, you must be mighty hot, man. You been grumpy all night. So I guess you, you smoking over there?
It was hot.
Clerk? Somebody?
I thought you guys were going to get over there and start chips and salsa.
Kyle? Joel, I'm in, I'm sorry. All right, let me get a motion to go back into regular session.
Second.
I have a motion to go back into regular session, and a second. All in favor? That's unanimous. Mr. Mecklen, is he up here? Would you report?
There was no action taken in the executive session. It needs to be reported.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, a second?
Second.
All in favor? We're adjourned.